Welcome to the June regularly scheduled meeting, the Warren Town Council. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
But we do have a glad and considerer, considerer of honor, which extends one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Hanley is going to unfortunately be unable to attend this evening. Or if he gets out of a work commitment, he may show up late. So we have the public comment period. If anybody here is willing to bring Kenny, hit the ceiling. Come on up. It's okay, start only.
I didn't even realize that the streets and sidewalks was on the agenda tonight. I just want to quickly circle back to something.
Microphone on?
Yeah. Circle back to something that I had mentioned a year ago, bicycles on the sidewalks.
Yes.
In the ordinance here, and I asked whether maybe something could be spray painted on the street, share the road. On Water Street in particular, but even on Main Street. And then something on the sidewalks, spray painted on the sidewalk itself, no bicycles on sidewalks. As recently as, well, Carrie, you must see them all the time. I saw someone yesterday. Who is healthy in their thirties, riding right down the middle of sidewalk on Water Street. And I'm thinking, you know, it's just not fair. So. That's the comment I wanted to share. And I'll just, before I leave quickly, Warren Land Trust, please become a member if you can. It's a wonderful organization. We have two acres, two miles of trails that hail pond preserve. And a path down to Jacob's Point Beach. And we'd love to have your support and have you join us for events and such. So Warren Land Trust. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? It's the Tracy, come on down.
Hey, good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Adam Tracy, I'm here with my wife Leslie and our girls Tula and Cleo. I had wrote to you a couple of weeks ago about an issue that we're having. Oh, sorry, thirty-four Coomer Avenue. Yeah. I wrote to you about an issue that we're having. Hopefully you had a chance to look at it. Just to make it brief, basically, there's a lot of young families on our street, lots of little kids. On a nice afternoon, pretty much everybody's in the street and around the same time, between four and six during an afternoon commute. A lot of people use Coomer Avenue as a cut through. From Main Street to Medicom and to all the neighborhoods that they, it leads to. And those cars are just driving much too fast down our road. We're hoping to possibly have our speed limit changed from twenty-five to twenty. I don't know exactly how to go about doing that. We'd also like to have it posted. Right now it's just posted on one side, coming from Main Street towards Medicom, have it posted on both sides or. I don't know, I guess see what we could, what we can do about it.
I know the police department is trying to put the information board.
Yeah.
Somewhere on Coomer.
Yeah.
And I think they were in the process of finding a good spot for that. The next thing that I didn't realize is that, and maybe Ben can answer this, although you're on the spot. State law is twenty-five is the slowest and under that has to be in our ordinance. Is that correct?
If this correctly, twenty-five mile an hour state law, I'm not exactly sure on it. I mean, it would make sense that how long it's been certainly over on the state.
So the first part of this process would be bringing the issue forward, which you have. The next step would be our solicitor giving us the best approach and the rules and law of the matter. And then we can put it on the agenda and see how the council feels about it as well as the public. And it probably wouldn't just be your neighborhood. When we're looking at it, we would probably send the issue off to the traffic commission. And ask for an advisory opinion on all of those connecting streets. But I do know that the chief's here now and I do know they're looking for a spot for that, for the information board. Is that still a possible? Find a location for that to get people aware of what they're doing? All right then.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you. So first step accomplished and we'll take it from here. Mr. Sullivan, our manager will put this down for next meeting and. We'll follow through best we can.
Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the public would like to bring an issue forward or? Simply any kind of recognition or anything? And okay, seeing that there's nothing. Left, I think for the public comment period, we're going to move on to a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Peggy Gossage. She's been the children's librarian at George Hale Free Library for as. Long as I can remember. And we're going to ask Peggy to come on down. Hi Peggy. How did they fool you on coming here? They tell you it was for someone else? Come on over here, come to this side. It's usually people who don't know. Did you know this was happening?
Not this.
Right. So usually it's a coworker that you're coming to support.
They had a lovely little time at the library for me too.
Well.
Lovely.
And we're going to officially recognize you. It's going to be in the minutes of the town council for perpetuity.
Wonderful.
So whereas Peggy Gossage, or better known as Miss Peggy, recently retired as a children's librarian. After thirty-five years of dedicated service. And whereas within many years in her role as a children's librarian, Miss Peggy fostered a love of reading. As well as a love of our library. She also demonstrated kindness and compassion to all the children. And families that participated in programming and visited the children's area at the George Hale Free Library. Whereas Miss Peggy has been a beloved member of the staff at the George Hale Free Library. Willing to spearhead many programs for our community. This including included helping teachers find needed resources. Presenting thousands of storytimes for our youngest members and their families. Through generations and even helped develop and initiate our famous gingerbread decorating program during the holiday festival. Now therefore be it resolved that the town of Warren and its citizens recognize with gratitude. The many contributions that Miss Peggy has made to our community during her thirty-five years of service. Be it further resolved that the town of Warren congratulates Miss Peggy on her retirement and wishes her the best of luck in her years to come. This is approved by the council on the tenth day of June, twenty twenty-five. Carrie M. Cronin, Vice President, John Hanley, Councilman, Derek Tromley, Councilman, and Louis A. Rago, Councilman. Congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words.
I've certainly enjoyed my time in Warren. This is a wonderful town you all can be proud of. And I've enjoyed all the children and all the grownups and parents and people I've worked with. And this has been a wonderful part of my life. I appreciate the kindness you've all shown to me too. And I hope this continues onward for many, many more years because libraries are wonderful and they're places of joy. Thank you so much too.
And Mr. Tromley, if you have a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take this opportunity to add my voice to yours into the crowds, the cheering. I think like most of us, this is the first time I'm realizing that Mrs. Peggy has a last name. You know, Miss Peggy was my first librarian. She helped me make my first library card, which is right here. I never leave home without it. It is. It is, I've watched her through my entire life mentor kids, tens of thousands of young people and show them patience. And kindness and thoughtfulness and the love of each other, the love of learning, the love of reading. And I can honestly say, I don't think that there is a finer librarian in the entire history of the world.
And. Strong words.
Very strong words, yes. And I just wanted to add and just say, Miss Peggy, thank you so much for inspiring so many of us. To do good in our community. Thank you.
So next, we have a. Subject matter that's not quite as big as the retirement of Miss Peggy, but. It's a fundraising opportunity for the public. And a few years back, we lit the big tree at Burris Hill Park. I call it a Christmas tree. I don't know, a big fir tree. And the lights got destroyed in a storm. And I figured that it was no big deal. We'll just put up new lights. Well, they're around seventy-five hundred dollars for that one tree alone. And it was so well. Received by the public that I had a council meeting previously and said, I wished during our budget meeting, I wish that. Maybe somebody would give a donation. Well. Thank God for that one act because we now have H two O Innovation. Which is the company running our wastewater treatment facility, the John M. Genetto wastewater wastewater treatment facility. And they're coming forward this evening to be the first donation in that account that we have already set up. For the seventy-five hundred dollars. And I think they'll be bringing a check for two thousand dollars with them. Is that true? Now you can come up.
Would you like to say a few words?
A lot of people know. Well, I have a few words, but you haven't stolen all of them. You gotta ask another couple of words. It's just, thanks for having us here. And you know, we truly appreciate being a part of your community and operating your wastewater treatment facility. And on behalf of H two O Innovation, Eric and the staff, it's an honor to be able to start this. Donation drive, four-year tree down at Burris Hill Park and Ernest Casey's memory. We're giving two thousand dollars and really hope that this will be a good start to make this happen.
Yeah. Anybody here want to take a picture? You were supposed to bring a photographer.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, gonna get over away from them.
We'll ask back. You're our guy. Yeah, yeah, two bookends, here we go. So for everyone, this is the beginning.
Great. Well, thank you. All right, thank you. Yeah, that's really.
And I'm just going to add that if anybody in the room here tonight or anybody who's viewing on. The playback would like to make a donation to this fund. Make your checks out to the town of Warren and in the memo, put Burris Hill Park Tree Fund, Tree Light Fund. And deliver it to the clerk's office and we will be forever grateful.
I guess it's a holiday tree.
Holiday tree.
Holiday tree.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
And stay at the podium. We're going to put your agenda item forward and we'll take care of the business of the town now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Town Manager One, in order to, as a recognition of H two O Innovations for receiving an award. The award comes from the Rhode Island Clean Water Association. Each year they recognize the commitment, innovation and achievements of wastewater facilities in the state. With a clean water program. Through this award program and H two O Innovations received the gold award. Which recognizes a treatment facility with no violations in the calendar year. And also complete permit compliance. So I know sometimes I get up and give you bad news about wastewater treatment. So tonight I'm sharing some good news with you. So I wanted to at least recognize that and let the community know that. The staff down there does an outstanding job and it shows with this award.
And so does the commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along. We have interviews. We still have an associate municipal court judge, one year. Term open. Next, we have the juvenile hearing board is one alternate position available. And Ms. Linazia Fuller, is she here as an applicant? Come on down.
Hey, everyone.
Hello.
Should I stand here?
Stand there, please. Tell us a little bit about yourself, why you feel like you're a good fit for this board and the floor is yours.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Linazia Fuller Bay. I recently moved to Warren, January twenty twenty-four. And I've been trying to find different ways to get involved in the community just because. I think it's really important to understand what's going on in town, wherever you live, because you are basically a byproduct of that. I'm originally from New York City. My background is in information technology, project management, business strategy. In particular to this board position, I applied because I feel it's really important that we care about the youth in the sense of. The foundation, that's where everything starts. They're the future. And I know that sounds cliche, but as someone who grew up in the New York City foster care system. Having programs and people and mentors that actually cared and could speak to that. Really helped me to graduate from college, have a successful career, have a more compassionate approach to how I do things. And look at things more holistically because it all starts with how someone feels, how you make people feel. And I figured this board would be the best way that I could take action. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I was expecting to be on a podium. But I just, you know, I have four children and for me, I just really want to make sure that the same love and kindness that I give to my children. I know that I'm not that person's mother or anything like that, but I think everybody needs to feel respected, cared for and just appreciate it.
Questions from the council, Mr. Rago?
So it's funny, on these application, they expire, May twentieth, twenty-one, twenty-four. So you've got a hundred years to. But anyways, so we have three positions and you'll fight for all three positions. Is there one that you would prefer?
Well, I didn't know specifically how it all worked out. Like if there were multiple candidates for each role or I just said, let me just put it down and see what's available. And wherever I could fit and help the most, I'd be happy to lean there.
Yeah, because you're a strong candidate for all of these positions. So I guess the question is, could we give her more than one position?
You can. There's nothing in the charter that says you can't, but let's continue with questions from the other.
Just, just.
Follow up, go right ahead.
Because one of them, the juvenile hearing board, they don't really meet that often.
Correct.
The two fiftieth is only for a year. So that's why I brought it up.
Two good points.
Yeah.
Miss Cronin.
I would, I would echo that. I mean, you are. You did wonderfully in your presentation about yourself.
Thank you so much.
Your nerves did not show, very impressed, but I, you would do well on any of these three boards. My initial feeling was that's a lot to, to take on for a first try on a, or a first time on a board or a commission.
Okay.
And as Councilman Rago said, the. Juvenile Hearing Board meets only as needed. The two hundred and fiftieth is meeting more often.
Okay.
Right now because we are leading up to that big celebration and.
Gotcha.
That would probably be an opportunity for you to meet a wider variety of people. And learn more about the history of the town and probably bring an interesting perspective as a person from outside of the community.
Okay.
And then the rec board, that is a regularly meeting board, they meet monthly. And you would have a more direct impact on programming for youth in the community. So. Given that, would you pick two rather than all three?
I come from a very, I worked in corporate America for a very long time. I had to present to executives and like Fortune five hundred companies. So. I don't think it would be very difficult compared to that much to, compared to what I had to do before. So it'd be an honor to do that if you guys are comfortable. And if you had any specific questions or concerns about how that plays out, I'm happy to see where we can figure it out to make it work.
Mr. Tromley, any questions for the candidate? Or the applicant, I should say.
Vice President Cronin did ask some of the questions I was going to ask. The Parks and Recreation Board, if I, if I'm still correct on this, meets. The third Tuesday of every month at seven in the Mary V. Cork School, or former school. And I do not know about the two fiftieth. And then as mentioned, the juvenile hearing board meets on an as needed basis.
Okay.
I would feel comfortable appointing you. I think you've made a strong case for yourself. Do you feel that you can handle the, because that is three boards going right. Diving headfirst, as we might say. We want to, I feel at least that we value your contribution. We definitely want to appoint you because you are a well-qualified applicant. We just want to make sure that we're supporting you rather than tossing you into the.
The fire.
Pit of despair almost. You feel, you feel confident in that regard?
I, I feel confident in that regard just because I feel like I have a more well-rounded view. Of like what goes on in the town, what programs are being offered, how that contributes to the two hundred and fiftieth as well as. Where children, depending on what that board is talking about, could possibly fit in. Or there could be some kind of merging of the three. So I'm totally comfortable with it. Just to give you an idea of like how my work style is. When I was running projects, I don't do it anymore unless it's consulting basis, but I would have like fifteen projects. And that would be across like three different programs. So I'm, I don't feel like it would be too much, especially. Being that it's like meeting monthly or as needed. Obviously, if there's a conflict of interest with the timing, I feel like I'll have enough time in between to prepare. I either board with, you know, information about whatever it is I need to share.
Uh, Ms. Reed.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Reed, what night are the two fiftieth meetings?
Typically meeting on a Monday and in that Mary V. Cork as well. It's also, you know, you would be welcome to join us because there are sort of friends of the group. They're not formally committee members, but certainly welcome to come. And it is for, you know, for one year. The other thing to think about.
Correct.
That that's a time sensitive.
Got you. Well, I'm gonna wrap this up and focus on what we're on right now as an agenda item, which is the juvenile hearing board.
Okay.
And we heard a lot of discussion on the other opportunities for you, but. We're not making those appointments until we get to that part of the agenda. I feel that a member of the juvenile hearing board wouldn't have a problem on any other boards because that board only meets when there's a case to be heard.
Okay.
So you may not meet for six months. You may meet six times in six months. It all depends. What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to a point?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, if you'd like to just sit right in the front.
Right there.
Oh, there's no one else? I didn't even notice on the next page. I forgot. Okay, it's you on the next page. I'm sorry.
If you have any experience as municipal court judge, because that's been.
Carrie.
No.
Okay, you didn't apply for that. So next is the Recreation Board. Which you've heard a lot about in regards to, well, not really a lot. We're more focusing on the Amado meetings. The rec board runs the recreation programs for the town. They work in cooperation as an advisory panel to our recreation director. And I'm looking at your resume, you're more than qualified to deal with any of these aspects. Is there a motion?
Some will second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now the two fifty, which is again being celebrated next year, but in the planning stages now.
Okay.
It meets every Monday night at Mary V Quirk and the woman. With the stripes with their hand waving to you, uh, you could probably go and sit next to her because you're probably going to get appointed to that board, uh, Ms. Cronin.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Can.
Because the two hundred and fiftieth is such a, uh, I, I know a few people who are going to the meetings and they are not appointed members. Perhaps you go to their next meeting and. Take, get a, a feel for it. There are multiple, there are, um, four positions available, so they're not going to fill up before next month. So if you go to that meeting, see how you like it and you say, yes, I would like to be an official member, we'll, we'll appoint you next month.
You wouldn't have to come.
You wouldn't have to come back. You just have to let us know.
Actually, you don't have to come back for a hundred years according to.
For that committee, correct.
I think that's probably a good, a good approach to just not overwhelm you, but we would absolutely love you to be, be a member.
Okay.
Go, go to, go to.
See if you like it.
Okay.
I usually ask that as my question, have you ever attended one of these meetings, which you made clear you had not? So it's, it's a.
No, it makes sense. Perfect sense.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, you can contact the clerk's office for any information you'd like on their schedule.
Okay.
Or look right at our website and I'm sure the days are there.
And thank you so much for doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Best way to learn about the town, best way to meet people and, uh, it's just wonderful thing. Thank you.
No, thank you all. I really appreciate the opportunity.
You're welcome.
Thanks, everyone.
Mr. President, would it be appropriate to make a motion to table that or is it just we take no action?
No actions needed.
Thank you.
Next we have a reappointment of, uh, Tax Assessment Board of Review, Mr. Brian Mellor. This is Brian here. Didn't come for his moment in the spotlight. Uh, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to repoint?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next we have acceptance of minutes. We have the regularly scheduled. Me- meeting minutes of May thirteenth. And, uh, I didn't see any errors, but. I'm still learning English.
They've looked good to me. I'll make a motion to, uh, accept those minutes for.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next we have the acceptance of the May twenty ninth meeting.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next we have the consent agenda, which is all items on P one, P two and P three with an asterisk. Are there any?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve.
Okay, anybody want to pull a item from the consent agenda for any reason? Mr. Tronley's motion is made. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next we have ordinance, ordinance one, chapter eighteen, streets and sidewalks, second reading. And, uh, article in general, section eighteen, one excavation standards to be employed when restoring roads, streets, lanes and highways. Uh, who's, is Mr., Mr. Wheeler's not here. Mr. Sullivan, are you going to speak for Mr. Wheeler? On this matter, did anybody, uh? I wasn't sure if, I knew Mr. Wheeler wasn't going to be here. I wasn't sure if anyone was going to be presenting.
I can, uh, he did not mention anything to me about this, but.
Okay.
Um, if you recall from, uh, last month's meeting that there were some, uh, changes that. Uh, the Public Works Director wanted to, uh, incorporate in as far as, uh, paving. The roadways, uh, making it, uh, that so that when a road is dug up, that it has to be paved from curb to curb. Uh, there was also some changes, uh, for utility markings to make sure that they were correspond with the, um. Uh. State and, uh, 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 the other utilities. Yeah, DigSafe, thank you, uh, for the president. Yes. DigSafe so that those markings were, uh, universal so that everyone understood what those, um. Uh. Markings meant.
So when we look at page nine of seventeen, I believe that is the beginning of the redactions. Or am I wrong? Is there any before that?
I believe that's personal.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And. Ben, do you, uh, you have anything to add on this?
Well, he's, excuse me, he's added on page eight, the correction to the colors of the, um. Markings or identified more clearly. And then there's further, then there's more, there are, the redactions start on page nine and going forward.
Last month we had first reading, I think, um. My brother. When Sisto, um, raised any legal issues with this, therefore, I have the same position.
My question is, assuming that we pass this. I mean, it, it seems so obvious that if work is being done, that we would want the streets repaved from curb to curb. Is this gonna? Is this gonna compel, say, Rida to actually do that?
This is for town roads, not state.
Yeah.
Or this is for?
For, for town roads. Yeah, that, we only have jurisdiction over town roads.
Okay.
So the state would be the one that would, uh, require the pavement from, which I think they might do right now.
Okay. Alright.
So, uh, when we're, when, when we're dealing with this, I actually had a. Resident come forward and didn't even realize that this was on. They're looking at a very close to the sidewalk sewer cut. And would this go into also, um, that kind of format? So we, whether it's a utility or not, because. I guess that's, um, we're looking at it as just a cut in the road. Should we add, from, from their perspective, they, uh, were telling me that. You know, the one cut where they're going to be doing this isn't really anywhere near anything else. And should we add that the DPW director should be, um, like for maybe small work under?
At his discretion.
At his discretion, like under ten feet. I mean, if it is.
I think he does have some discretion data.
I, I would support an amendment to clarify that though. I do believe it is implicit, but I would support an amendment that would clarify it would be at the DPW. Director's discretion. I would also note, I believe the exact language is from curb line to curb line, so. I do not, uh, at least my interpretation would be that it wouldn't include curb cuts as described by the president, but I.
Well, no, no, this, this wouldn't be a curb cut. It is, it is in the road.
Oh, I see.
And it's for, um, a repair of their sewer line or, or in addition to the sewer line. They were then told they have to pave fifty feet on either side of this cut. So, again, I have no problem, as you know, making sure that our roads are left good. But they were looking at a price difference. That's went from maybe a thousand to thousands. And, I mean, do we really want the street cut up and all of that just for something?
I think the intent was, uh, for streets that were done within a year or two or three years.
This one I think is going to say five years. Is that correct? Yeah, originally it was three years, I believe. Anyone familiar with the actual language? Cause I looked and I couldn't find it. And Mr. De Sisto is on his way.
Would it be appropriate to table this until Mr. Sisto arrives to answer those questions?
I mean, we, we can, uh. Cause no action's been taken and we can just put it off later in the, uh, in the meeting. So why don't we do that? Cause these are important questions and it is the second reading. So whatever we come up with tonight will be, uh, an ordinance, so. Let's put that off. Uh, I don't think we need any action, do we? We're just gonna, uh, so is there a motion to table until Mr. De Sisto arrives?
Some, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next we have. Ordinance two, this is a repeal, chapter seven, finance and taxation. This is the first reading. And it's the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
So this was.
Go right ahead.
Suggestion, um. While we appreciate all of the hard work and effort, uh. Done by the group of people who we appointed to that, um, uh. Board that we created. A few years ago, they are no longer meeting and their funding has disappeared. So there's really no. Uh, and then most of them are now serving, well, we're looking at two of them. On a similar board that has a, an, a sort of an adjacent purpose. That is not a, um, a chartered board or commission. So it didn't seem appropriate to just have that. Board hanging out there while we're, we've gone in a different direction. So at my request. We are looking to repeal. This chapter seven, finance and taxation, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
And there's no funding available right now. Mr. Rego, question?
A, a question for Ben. Ben, is it normal when you, when you, I've never s-. Uh, been involved in a repeal of an ordinance. Is this normal? You have two readings?
This is a, uh, it's actually an ordinance created by Tom Council. You want, why is it you created it? It's the same process in order to. Yes.
Any questions?
Uh, not a question. I'll just echo that I agree with, uh, Vice President Cronin. It, this is a kind of a bookkeeping thing, just to try to keep everything straight. And if a board is not meeting, but is still on the books, it creates confusion and this will clarify that confusion. And again, the money has dried up, so this, there's no more purpose for this board anymore.
Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, hearing none. What's the action of the council?
Motion to move the first reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next we have a public hearing on a request for a class BBL beverage license. From Sarah Beth Warner and Cordo Kwazi Booth.
Yo, I'm gonna ask the rescues on this. I'm on the bottom.
Okay. So Mr. Rego is going to recuse himself because he is within the two hundred feet. And, uh, this is Ferry Tea Room.
Yes.
Is what you're doing business at, sixty nine Market Street. And please. Explain to us why you need this license.
We're just hoping to expand our menu and, um, you know, people have been requesting mimosas or. Wine or champagne and so we were trying to meet these requests.
Any questions? From the council?
I hear a lot of great things about your establishment, so I'm very happy to grant this.
Thank you.
And you have, um, you will have TIP certified, uh, servers?
Yes. The service say?
Yes, yeah, whatever. That's, yeah, service say with, yes.
Yep.
Alright, and, uh, fire chief, police chief? All okay with this? Alright, is there a motion? Mr. Fire, I'm sorry, yes. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on this? Questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, is there a motion to grant this request?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second, uh, que- question though.
Sure, discussion.
Discussion. The BBL, does one exist or do we, is this the creation of one and then? We have one available.
Yes.
Okay, so then there is one for you.
And.
That was my question.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have it.
Thank you.
At the clerk's office tomorrow and you're all set.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Though, I make a motion to move, uh.
Yeah.
How's it?
Thank you.
P, P seven.
Yes.
Forward.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I think you actually have to get up.
Do I?
Yeah.
Do I have to get up?
You have to become a member of the public, yes.
Really?
Yes.
Why? I'm not a member of the public.
Not from up here. You're, you're a public servant. Or Savant. So number seven, request for outdoor seating. And this is from Ferry T LLC again, uh, doing business as Ferry Tea Room. Do you have a seating plan with you?
Um, we turned it and you should have it. It was submitted with the application. Yep.
Okay, it's probably in this file. That's okay.
They're like two bistro tables, like a small.
Outside, yes, thank you. Uh, fire chief, police chief, have you familiarized yourself with the sidewalk?
Not measuring from the, uh, I didn't see a player with two seats, but we can call the building official to measure. Up to the sidewalk.
So would it be okay compliant on your, uh. Inspection? So what we can do is we can give you, grant you this outdoor seating if the council so deems it. And make a contingent upon their approval. So they'll go and visit, make sure you have the distance, the ADA compliance. And all of that and you won't have to come back.
Okay, um, question about that, just so we know. We, they're folding tables, they're small, um, we bring them in at night and we're only open Thursday through. Sunday, so is that something we would schedule, we'd know, because we want to make sure they're there for you to measure?
What are your business hours? When are you there?
Um, we're there definitely Thursday through Sunday, eleven to four. We're usually linger a little after if we have.
Okay, so why don't you call the, call the fire department?
Okay.
And.
Perfect, thank you.
Have him come over. I'm sure they'll help you out because they're working those hours as well.
Perfect.
Great. Question?
Question. So are you intending to seat and serve your guests? This is just for, um, your guests to sit while they're waiting for their table to be ready, so there will be no.
Right, or someone grabbed a bubble tea and they wanted to sit outside with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
But not food service or. Like if they, someone grabbed it to go drink.
Okay.
Want to sit there.
Yeah, because the bike path is right there, so we have people come in and grab a tea or a bubble tea. And this enables them to be able to go outside and sit down for a minute and drink it, whereas right now our dining room is so small that we don't really. We're not, we don't have the capacity to have people just order a beverage quick fix like a drink, like you would at like Starbucks. And take a seat inside. So this is just giving them that space.
Alright, so I just wanted to confirm that you weren't doing table service outside and all of that.
No, not at all.
I'm curious about your question. How would that change?
I would be, uh, wouldn't it be a capacity change, number of seats?
I think these have to fall into compliance with your capacity as well. So these seats don't give you an additional capacity.
Right.
They work within the capacity of your, uh, business already. And if you wanted to serve out there on them, I believe you can. Not alcohol though, correct?
Yeah. And alcohol, because it's a public sidewalk.
Correct.
Right.
But they could eat a sandwich at the table.
Okay, alright, good, so thank you.
So good question, uh, and a great answer, so.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve the outdoor seating contingent upon, uh, measurements. Being approved by our safety professionals.
He ended in indemnification agreement because it's on public. On sidewalk.
And what he said.
And that would come from their. Their insurance company or? Or you have it in town?
It's a, it's a, just a form because you're allowing the public space to be used, uh, uh, for this private purpose if something happens. Uh, they, their coverage would be the county responsible for your insurance.
Alright.
So there you have it.
Okay.
So you just sign that tomorrow, make an appointment with the fire chief and the building, uh, official and you'll be all set. Uh, so is a motion made?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you have it.
Thank you very much.
Done. Good luck. Next we have. Welcome back, Mr. Rego.
Thank you.
Next we have request for a mobile food establishment permit. Um, oh wait, that's.
Yeah, P four.
Oh, different. Okay, yeah, Brixton Coffee Roasters. You're not Brixton. Is Brixton here? You're Brixton. Come on down. I'm always a little confused.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tronley. Hi, how are you?
Good.
So, uh, give us a little rundown on what you're trying to do and.
Yeah, so I just opened up a, like a mobile coffee cart. Um, it's the first year I'm doing it, so I'm just going around getting permits and thought it'd be.
So this would be, uh, like a food truck?
Um, correct. It's like a petty cab with tap handles and. Just nitro colfer and the kegs.
I guess my question is, uh, are you going to come to Warren and do business around town or is it for events?
Um, I was hoping to do both.
Okay.
I'm not entirely sure how the zoning works.
That's why we're going to, uh, send this right over to the solicitor and he can let you know what you legally can and can't do.
Okay.
What are the restrictions, uh, here in Morris?
Okay, I think it's like two hundred and fifty feet, something like that. Okay.
So long you can know that.
Yes.
You have your steady life?
Yes. And is that pretty much the only restriction? So if I'm outside of that two hundred and fifty feet? Am I able to still bend?
I'm gonna just bounce over to the third for a second because I have something to say, but Sandy.
It only at special, uh, special locations that have, you know, like, things that happen in town.
Okay.
Just go down the street and open up right on the corner. Just go down the street and open up right on the corner. It's only at like special things that happen.
Okay, so only I do.
Recreation Director always, you know, we have a list of people and a lot of people will call us and ask us, you know, like, and have a list. Because they have a big, you know, thing on Young, uh, Forest Hill, um, the Recreation Director has also. She owes, is looking for some people to do that.
Okay.
Um, so you think actually you're on a list now and we can let her in.
Okay, perfect.
And Mr. DeSisto, you had a follow-up or no?
Not after what Sandy said, no.
Cause it seemed as if they were. So would, would a peddler's license be what partly what he would be maybe requesting as well?
Is it your intention to just, uh, kind of wheel it part around?
Initially, that was my intention, um, where obviously I'm allowed to. That would be.
I'm trying to get you there. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
So is not, this is not just for special events?
I was hoping to do both, but if it's special events, like I know you guys have the Warren Walkabout, so I think it'd be pretty cool to get involved with that.
That's fun. And then we have the concert series.
Yep. And obviously like the Hope in Maine markets, I think that would be.
Well, I, I think you'd have to ask Hope in Maine.
Right, right.
But you would need this license. I think you're on the right track.
We, we have a number of, um, annual events. There's, uh, the Folks Fest in August. There's Folk at the Farm in October. There's two Sundays of walkabouts in October. Um, there's, uh, coming up in June, there's an art night in Warren and then there's another one in August. So there are a number of opportunities. So if you look on, uh, if you find out what the events are, you'll be on the list. You can either approach the, the, um, event, uh, the person who's putting on the event.
Right.
Or you could wait to see if you get the call.
Okay.
And, and then the summer concert series is, is another.
So you're doing all the right things. The only, uh, reason for our little, uh, huddle up here was because I kinda sensed like maybe you wanted to just be on the street here or there or everywhere.
Yep.
So it's a mobile food, uh, permit which you're looking for allows you the opportunity to be at these events.
Correct.
So what's the, uh, pleasure of Mr. Tronley with the question?
Yes, a, a question for the solicitor. Um, now if I'm understanding this, this is a, and I don't mean to be insulting in this, but a coffee cart, so to speak. Cause accurate synopsis. Would the two hundred and fifty feet prohibition apply to all eateries? Or just to the eateries that serve coffee in that regard?
Good question, dear.
For his benefit as well.
Yeah, the good question is distinction, the, uh, statue, the portage spot. Um, truck and a cart.
Mm-hmm.
However, uh, that prohibition extends to parts. And I think that was one of the issues that came up, uh, when, like that was put in, what happens if somebody just steps apart? Uh, can they, um, be in that, in that area? So it'd be difficult, even if you said, look, you know, you can go on Main Street. You've got restaurants here, it'd be difficult to do it near Water Street and things of that nature, notwithstanding the fact that it's apart instead of a truck.
I, I think what I'm asking though is, um, for example, um, La Piñata is a Mexican restaurant. Uh, this gentleman is serving coffee. So would he be two fifty feet away from that restaurant? For all restaurants or all businesses, regardless of what they serve versus only those restaurants and businesses that serve coffee?
It's the former, not the latter.
It's the full.
All restaurants.
It's all restaurants. So I just want.
There's no distinction towards that.
I, I understand. Just wanna make it clear for this gentleman right here. Thank you.
So you understand what we're, what we're telling you, I'm sure?
Yeah.
Uh, pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Excellent. Thank you guys.
You're welcome. Hope to see you out there. The next event. Next, we have another request from Triple Deuce, Benjamin Cottone here. He's looking for a mobile food permit, mobile food establishment. Hi, Ben.
Hello.
Let us know, uh, what you want to do.
So we, my wife and I own a twenty-two foot mobile food trailer. We're, uh, with a wood fired oven on the back end. We're serving wood fire pizzas. We're working out of Hope in Maine as our commissary and we'll also be doing five markets with them. So.
Excellent.
That's why we're here to obtain a license today.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you have it.
Easy. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have a request for a one day entertainment license for Mark Reinhardt. Hello. How you doing? So what do you plan on doing?
So we, uh, we do, uh, this is the fifteenth annual event that we've done. Um, it's Mont Hope Alumni, um, Flag Football Game. It's the last six years, um, it shifted gears. It went from a, a competitive event um, to more of a celebration of two men that we tragically lost in this community, uh, Matthew Harris, Matthew Deepeswell. Um, it's a scholarship. We generate funds that day, um, you know, for two, uh, qualifying candidates. And we present them that day, um, to the kids and the families.
Well, I can't thank you more. It's my nephew, Matthew. So, what's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for doing what you do.
Thank you, God.
Next, we have, uh, request permission to install P nine dash fifty and to maintain poles, wires and fixtures for Navigans Electric in Verizon, New England, Inc. Location is north of the northwest corner of the intersection of Union. I know that this, uh, site has been reviewed, uh, anybody here on that matter? No. Um, pleasure of the council?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah?
To prove this subject to them taking down all the other sister poles. I don't love these pole and sisters. So those excess poles on the side of the pole that's supposed to be taken down, what would you call it?
Sister poles, but we've already had that discussion and it's at the state.
That's fine, but this motion is subject to them taking it down before they put up other poles. Uh, let me just share something with you.
Please.
I was walking down Market Street this week and it was one that was on an angle. I saw death in front of me, the big, uh, big, an eighteen wheeler was passing on the right hand side. And I swear, he was this close to the pole, scared, scared me. I went to the manager's office. He, he sent an email to them. So this can be very tragic.
I know.
So my motion is what I just said. Uh, and that's the reason why I'm.
I hear you. And I too saw death. And it wasn't a telephone pole. Uh, Mr. DeSisto, can that language, uh, be applied?
Actually, I'm gonna give some advice here.
Please.
And the advice is, yes, it is acceptable. Ultimately, uh, could there be, um, a fight here that goes to the PUC? Yes. But I do think it's something that you should, uh, uh, call attention to it. I do think it's appropriate at this time. I just can't guarantee it's gonna be ultimately successful, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay, motion on the floors. Is there a second?
I will second that, but I have a question.
Discussion, please.
Uh, what's the status of that legislation? That would compel the UC to remove or the utilities to remove these additional poles?
Um, it, it's, it, it's alive.
It's alive? Is it in committee? Is it out of committee? Is it?
In my understanding is that, that, uh, legislation is still in committee.
I do not know which legislation you're referring to. That's the problem on that.
Okay.
All right.
At the end of the day, if it's in committee.
Okay.
Okay, that's, uh, all be the end of there. Mr. Rigo's motion's made. He wants them to take the sister pole down and if they wanna put it up, uh, if they wanna put up this pole, P nine dash fifty, they're gonna have to do that. Uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
There you have it. Maybe it'll lead to something. Next, we have, uh, let's see, next page, page five. Old Business, we have discussion in action regarding auditing ser-
Correspondence first.
Oh, correspondence, I'm sorry. I jumped right over all of those. Correspondence. So we have correspondence with two asterisks. That is found on page four, I believe, the beginning, yes, and page five. Are there any items and correspondence that any council member wishes to pull?
I would call C eleven and C twelve and ask that letters of, uh, gratitude be sent to, uh, Marion Clark, who has resigned after many years on the tree commission. Um, and then to, uh, Andrew Ellis, who served as the, for many years on his running board, including many years as the chair honorably, uh, uh, send letters of gratitude and thanks to them.
Okay, so that's Ms. Cronin's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we have Old Business, discussion in action regarding auditing services bid. And Mr. Sullivan? What say you?
Thanks, Mr. President. Uh, if you recall, last month, uh, the council, uh, wanted to review the, uh, proposals, the three proposals that the town received for, uh, auditing services.
Yes.
Um, uh, those proposals were shared with the, the council. They were also shared with, uh, our budget, uh, advisory committee. Um, and after, um, discussions, um, with the advisory committee, um, it's recommended that, uh, we go with, um, Damiani, which is the, which was the lowest, uh, bid that the town received. Um, we feel that they're qualified. Um, we do have to make sure that we have our information to them on time and make sure that, um, we don't cause any issues that would require additional fees to be added on top of this. Um, and, uh, the, the finance director did reach out to, uh, a couple of communities that have, uh, currently using this audit firm and they had, uh, nothing but positive, uh, comments, uh, for the, for the firm.
So Mr. DeSisto, you're, uh, familiar with the Damiano and Company, uh, with their RFP?
They're, they're a part of the, um, Auditor General's list of approved, um, auditing firms of matters of this nature.
Okay.
I can't say I'm as familiar with them as I am with the other two. However, they are the lowest responsive bidder. And, uh, I think, uh, what they're trying to do here is to gain market share.
All right, any questions?
I, I just had one question.
Please, Mr. Tronley?
I believe we were, we had a question, multiple council members had a question on the bid from Hague Shady and Co. The, the additional information was total, all inclusive, maximum price each year. Was there any clarification from them on what that meant? In their bid? I don't think it matters, cause I believe we are gonna go with the lowest bid. Just, I'm curious what the explanation was.
They, they, what they do is they, they, uh, bill annually and if you notice, each year there was an increase
Uh-huh.
uh, on it. And I think that's what they were, uh, trying to drive at. They had this total amount for the three years, but they wanted to have a, a bid, um, uh, so it was specified for each year.
I see.
Uh, which I'll explain, uh, further after the meeting.
Well, tha- thank you. Um, I'll, if that's the appropriate time, I'll make the motion to approve, uh, the bid of Damiano and Company and the total amount of eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Okay, is there a second and discussion, Mr. Rigo?
No, I have no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. We have discussion in action regarding the production of a motion picture in the town of Warren, which I have to recuse myself from because, uh, I'm gonna be working on it. Gentlemen, come on up and Ms. Cronin will conduct the meeting. Good to see you.
Yes, how are you?
Hi, guys. Welcome. If you could just introduce yourselves by name and who you're, um, with and representing, that would be great.
My name is Alex Barrett. I am, uh, the location manager on the film. Uh, we're representing, uh, Two Beacons Productions as a company who's putting on the production. Uh, this is Tom Mahoney. He's, uh, uh, my assistant location manager. Um, uh, we are working on a project called, uh, Remain, which is filming here in Rhode Island this summer. Um, uh, actually, our very first day of filming, um, will be right here in Warren. Uh, so, um, that's what we're here to talk about tonight. We, uh, are looking to do, uh, a day of filming at the Coffee Depot, um, right across the street on June eighteenth. So that'll be our first day, uh, again, of the entire production, but that's, um, our first day here in Warren, obviously as well. Um, we're requesting, um, some parking here, uh, behind City Hall for some of our trucks. Um, we sent over, uh, some maps that you guys should have, uh, uh, the area we're sort of indicating is right here behind La Piñata for some of our, um, uh, box trucks or, uh, forty foot box trucks and some equipment trucks. Um, our larger tractor trailers will be parked offsite, uh, out at the, uh, old Toyota lot in Bristol. Um, so the larger trucks and most of our, uh, our crew's personal cars will be parked out there and we'll be shuttling people in, in advance, uh, with Coffee Depot. Um, we will be closing the Coffee Depot unfortunately on the eighteenth, so you'll have to make other arrangements for coffee, I guess, on that day. Um, we'll be. We'll be filming all inside, um, the Coffee Depot. We're requesting, uh, we're also requesting the street parking just outside, uh, the Coffee Depot to clear for, for pictures. So, um, basically the spots on either side of Main Street, um, uh, from.
Sir, could you speak up a bit? I'm having a little trouble here.
Sorry, am I away from the mic? Um, yeah, so we're requesting, uh, the parking on Main as well, just outside Coffee Depot mainly for picture, cause we're gonna see outside the, we're inside, but we'll, the cameras will be looking out towards the street. So we'll, we'll wanna just keep those spots clear. Um, we are also, uh, looking to have two police details on with us, uh, that day, um, to be out on Main Street. Um, and do some intermittent traffic control to help our crew getting across the street, um, and possibly, uh, holding traffic for when we see outside.
Okay, and so the seventeenth is gonna be set up and?
Seventeenth is gonna be set up, uh, that'll be a much smaller day. Um, we're gonna come in, uh, sort of, um, uh, do some dressing inside the Coffee Depot while they're still open on that day. Uh, we, we will want to have some trucks here and some equipment, um, probably dropping right off, uh, in the front. Um, the other, uh, request on, on the eighteenth is when we're filming inside the Coffee Depot. Uh, for, uh, our call time is eleven AM, so that's when we're looking to start filming. Um, crew will probably start to arrive a couple hours before that, around nine AM. Uh, between nine and eleven, trucks will start to arrive here in the lot. Crew will start to land over at the Toyota lot and get shuttled over. So ideally by eleven AM, we're up and filming at the Coffee Depot. Um, and then we actually have two locations this day. We, we, we start our day here and then we move to Bristol. Uh, so I think by four thirty-five o'clock, we're hoping to be sort of loading up and moving to Bristol to shoot some, uh, evening scenes down in Bristol. Um, so mo- all the trucks that are in the lot, everything would leave, uh, at the end of that, that evening. Um, there would be, uh, you know, some, uh, and then we're gonna come back, uh, the following morning to pick up anything that was left behind, but, um, should be minimal. Most, most of the heavy equipment will come with us at the end of the day on the eighteenth. Um, the one other thing we're looking to do is when we're, when we're filming inside, uh, we wanna light, uh, put some lights on Jefferson Street, um, looking inside, uh, the Coffee Depot, that basically shine through, um, which our guys explained to us today would, uh, ideally while we're doing it, um, if we could, uh, kind of close Jefferson for those hours just to, for safety reasons.
Oh.
Which is, this was a new note we got about an hour before the meeting. So I'm, that's something new, um, we're bringing up. But, uh, um, it would just be that one stretch of Jefferson. And we, we're already talking with the surrounding businesses. We're gonna park some stuff, um, behind the Coffee Depot. So we've been talking to the businesses that kind of are affected by that lot directly behind.
The account there and then the, the other businesses on the other side of Jefferson Street, the, there's an antique and then a, there's Roadie Roots and there's.
Yes, yep. So we'll, we'll work with them and then we're also, we're talking to the armory. We're gonna have our extras hang out in the armory. Um, of that, so we're working on a deal with the armory to utilize that space for the extras in the scene. Um, when they're not working on set, they'll go sit in the armory. Um, uh, and then it seemed like there was maybe two or three other. Uh, and then it seemed like there was maybe two or three other. Uh, residential homes that might be affected on Jefferson, or is?
The, at the bottom of Jefferson, there are homes on either corner that are technically on Eddie Street. They have uh, dri- the, one home has a driveway on Jefferson Street, so they'll need to be able to get access coming up. And then going back out, they wouldn't need to get up to Main Street. They, it's one way going down anyway. So they would just need to be able to get access to their driveway. But if you're shooting up, if you're just lighting through the window at the depot, there's plenty of space that. They, that wouldn't be a problem as long as they, and as long as you have, I don't know if you need to get an additional um, detail. To at the um, where Jefferson is closed off. Are your um, extras all uh, booked and, and?
We uh, are, there's a casting company that, that handles all that. Uh, do you want to be in the?
No, no, no. Uh, I'm just uh, want, want to be sure that the casting lets the, I, how, how many extras are we?
We're uh, roughly forty extras.
So that there is the uh, sixty bus, which is an excellent way to get um, you know, between Providence and, and, and Warren. That's a great way, just parking is, will be limited, obviously.
Yes.
So we don't want the additional influx of, you know, forty cars for forty extras.
Yes, and so they will also be parked offsite out in Bristol on Metacom and will be shuttled in and we're going to get them ready. So they'll all get ready and then they'll get, there'll be vans running back and forth, dropping, crew dropping extras. Uh, so really, the, the, the parking of it all is the equipment trucks that will be. Uh, that we want to put behind La Piñata and then we would uh, sort of push our gear up, what is it, Crowed? Um, yeah, across the street and have some assistance from the police crossing. But uh, that's, that's the bulk of our parking downtown. It is really just that and then the spaces we want to clear on Main Street for, for pitcher. Again, part of our, you know, Tom has already been here in town talking to some of the businesses.
Oh, we've heard.
Yeah, so we, we usually do outreach to anybody who's going to sort of be impacted uh, with, by our presence. Um, so we can also talk to. You know, checking with the, the neighbors on Jefferson, if we're going to be, you know, obstructing the street for, for those hours. You know, and, and try to manage any needs they have. So that's our first piece of filming in, in Warren.
Yeah, for, for, for the downtown portion of it, this seems very well mapped out. And I know you've been meeting with the manager and appreciate it if you, you know, are reaching out to all the surrounding businesses and the residents. Who might be impacted. Safety is obviously, you know, our primary concern and not having any negative impact on. The small businesses that are around there, the bookstore, Delectas, the. Restaurants, the antique shops and whatnot. It's just, it's exciting, but it can also be like a buzzkill if your customers can't get to you, so.
Of course.
We just want to be sensitive to that.
Yeah, so again, we'll continue to, to talk and, and get our information out to people and if any of the businesses have concerns or questions. Uh, you know, Tom will be passing his number around town to, you know.
Great, and are you on set or who's, who's the onset?
Tom will be on set. I'd be, I'll, I'll be sort of, I kind of wrangling all the locations of this movie, so I, I kind of jump from. Uh, I'll be back and forth probably from here in Bristol, but Tom will be specifically in Warren on the day, so.
As long as, say, like our clerk and our manager have, you know, access to you if anything comes up for, you know. Instant answers or questions.
Yeah, and we, if anybody who needs our information, we can.
Mr. Rego?
Got a question for Tony, who's also my agent, just in case.
Okay.
Tony, what are we doing? We giving authority to the police chief or the town manager to do all of these things, or?
Well. Happy West.
That's why you're my agent.
That's, Mr. Barrett is asking essentially, set out uh, in that uh, agreement that you have. All the things he wants to do in the detail. Now, I've worked with him in the past. And I have to say, they do a great job. Uh, but um, if you see a way clear to approving this because your approvals aren't needed for this. I recommend uh, a few conditions. Condition number one is you guys usually have that uh, agreement that's like one page and a half.
Yes, we do have a filming agreement, yep.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like that because you're going to be using some. Uh, town property.
Yep.
That's the first thing. The second thing is, is for the logistics of this. I do think it's appropriate to have police, uh, the police chief and the fire chief. Uh, just to be made aware, so I know you do it anyway. Uh, so that they can get in and get the plan on this. My only concern is, you know, Main Street is a state road. I don't know if you have. Permission from the state for some of these things because it is, that is in fact Route one fourteen, uh, IRA one fourteen, just.
Yeah.
Throwing that out to you.
Yeah, so I don't, Tom, we had some discussions with the police already. I don't know uh, that as far as the jurisdiction. I mean, if we need to bring in.
Just to consult.
Yeah, I, so we do have, obviously, we work with, with the, the state film office as well, so we have a per- a filming permit from the state of Rhode Island. And through the uh, the state film office that lists all our filming locations throughout Rhode Island. Um, so we have that and then when we get into roads like this, it's, I, I leave it, you know, to. The discretion of the police, if it's local police or if we need state troopers or, you know, yeah.
So what Mr. Barrett is asking for is, is uh, for permission uh, to do these activities that he's outlined. If you see a way clear to saying yes to that, just condition on it, uh, the signing of the uh, an appropriate. Uh, filming agreement. And um, also consultation with police and fire.
Yep.
On this, and the third thing would be uh, contact. Uh, for uh, town manager and uh, town clerk.
Make a motion subject to.
We're not quite done. There's another location.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was just going to say, subject to what you said, so just remember what you just said.
I'd just like to hear the, the, the planning and logistics and our police chief, which is gorgeous.
We did have communication. So we were told on Main Street, Coffee Depot, crew officers would be to stop traffic. And pedestrians crossing in front of the, the Coffee Depot during the shoot, it would be approximately thirty seconds. But that's all we were told. We would stop people from passing in front of the restaurant, traffic to stop, thirty-second shoot.
Yeah, and that's, that's still the plan. And the only thing we added today was that the Jefferson piece of it and if we can. You know, i- i- if we're going to put gear in the, in the road there, if we can close that for.
We're all concerned about is getting rest personnel in the occasion for that. We don't have a problem on the way from Jefferson. Some sort of entrance.
Yeah, yeah, and, and you know, again, if it's uh, if there's any need for additional details or whatnot, you know, we, we're. Yeah.
Jefferson Street place that I would get to get rescue or police in there.
Yeah, okay, understood. Yeah, and then we can get a, uh, we can certainly get the agreement over to you in our contest. I mean, I'm, it's. It's a little different with every town we go to, some have permits, some it's agreements, so however. We need to go about getting the official permission on, we, we will.
Excuse me, as far as the parking in front, is that something the chief can take care? No parking or whatever?
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna throw up the town hall, we're gonna find uh, La Piñata. So that they get all the trailer there, where we spoke about that, we've done that last time.
I do have a few questions, but I think I'll let the, I guess there's a sec- that you're going to.
Yeah, so there.
In Barton Street.
We, yeah, we have one more piece of filming here, which is a, a little less invaded. It's on a private property off of Barton Ave. That we are filming uh. Um, June thirtieth through the, through July third, where we'll be out uh, at that property. Um, it's set sort of way back off Barton. The only thing we're sort of requesting and. We've been going through uh. The um, Bristol superintendent as the use of Kikemewett Middle School for parking our trucks. Uh, on those days at Kikemewett and we would shuttle everybody into, to Barton, the Barton Ave location and. Be pretty much out on their property uh, for those days.
Okay, and we've checked the schedule to make sure that there's no like paving being done in the parking lot there. Or that there's no uh, recreation, you know, any sporting events taking place on those fields.
Is the uh, sometimes the ban of other communities, states can come to and stay at St. Combin's Middle School for the night before.
Oh, this.
He's aware of it, he's going to check into it. Other than that, we don't think, but are you, we also advise him that U. Cole School is also an option. Uh, if that is the case, so they're aware of it.
Okay. Right, the Fourth of July.
Yes. And yeah, so that's, and that's all our filming here in, in Warren on this one, so.
Okay, and Mr. Tromley?
Yes, um, so uh, just to reiterate what um, Vice President Cronin said. Um, because Route one fourteen is a state road, the sixty bus comes through Ripta. Um, I hope that they won't interrupt your shots perhaps for the out, exterior, but um, I don't believe that we have any. Say or anything to do with how often the sixty bus goes down Main Street, so just be aware of that. Or see if you can coordinate with Ripta on that element. Um, and then I think as the chief pointed out to Tom is previously. The June, Ju- June thirtieth through July third is a very patriotic, very hectic time down in Bristol, Warren. Um, so just, so that you know that it, there's probably going to be increased traffic, increased potential issues that, you know, might impact your uh. Scheduling your logistics, so just be aware of those two things. The question that I have, or more the concern I have, safety is paramount. The second issue. In a previous, which will go unmentioned, uh, filming opportunity that took place in Warren, there was quite a bit of trash left over that. Permeated the streets of downtown Warren, so my only concern would be just make sure that everything is going to be cleaned up afterwards. No coffee cups strewn around and, and whatnot. Can you, can you talk a little bit about that if possible?
Yes, yeah, well, first off, I will say, I did not work on whatever project that was. Yeah, um, so I don't want to, uh, neither Tom or I were on that, but um, we, yes, we will have. Uh, I personally have someone on my staff. It's sort of the. Uh, entry level position who gets to hang out after everybody's left and pick up all the garbage that's left behind, so um. We have uh, yes, a couple motivated individuals who'll be, you know, here uh, after all the trucks have left and make sure. Uh, we get everything cleaned up and put back.
Thank you.
I can say that uh. Uh, uh, Mr. Barrett worked with the town of Lincoln for Hocus Pocus too. And that was at Chase Farm and the town was satisfied with uh. Their uh, uh, cleanup afterwards, including um, there was some damage done because it was a rainstorm. They had trucks out there. And they were actually very good about it, so.
I'm glad that you have a great track record.
Yeah, that was a, that was a much bigger uh, ordeal out there and uh, Chase Farm, we were there for months and.
I only have one more question. Uh, if you'll indulge me, what is this film about? Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Well, I can't really say too much, uh, but I mean, it is, uh, you, you've probably seen it on the.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask.
The press release for it, it's uh, you know, M. Night Shyamalan, who, who's done, you know, The Sixth Sense and Signs, so he's got, you know. The, he's a certain type of film he makes and uh, you know, it stars Jake Gyllenhaal as our, our lead in the movie. And uh, yeah, I'll just have to come out and see it.
Thank you.
They'll all want to move to Warren. You know how that goes.
I'm sure.
I was just wondering if the Lincoln Police, Lincoln Police Chief had any issues back in the day when they were doing.
No, no issues. Very uh, very uh, easy to work with and uh, anything that we ask, it was taken care of.
Well, it's very exciting uh, for the community and uh. Do we have a motion?
I want to make a motion with the conditions that Tony uh, had recommended.
And because you're not going to have a meeting in between the time they film and now, if you want to delegate, sign it to the manager.
Yes.
Basically, what I'm looking for is an indemnification agreement, among other things. So.
Which is appropriate. I'll make a second to that motion with the uh, caveats that the solicitor has laid out, including the. Empowering the manager to sign on our behalf.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good luck.
Good luck, gentlemen, you so much.
Okay.
See you soon. It feels good.
Okay, great. The podium getting back to work. Next, we have discussion and action. New business two requests the town manager, send a letter to the superintendent of the Bristol Warren Regional School District. And Bristol Warren Regional School Committee to repair the potholes at Hugh Cole and Kikemewett Middle Schools. Mr. Rego?
Sure, about a month ago, I received uh, an email, I believe we all did. Uh, from someone that was very concerned and I'm going to read it and there's a reason why I'm going to read it. Said, wonderful town council we have in this town. It's wonderful knowing that town council once again approved another ridiculous school budget. When the parking lot of U. Cole is absolutely embarrassment and hazard. I don't want any bull whatever excuses. I've been listening to the excuses for three full years, three. And then he said something else that was, the reason I read this is, if somebody had the complaint and they want to email us or call it. Just tell us what the complaint is. All this other stuff, honest to God, when I first read it, I wish I just want to pass it on, but then I took a ride to. Uh, U. Cole School and this guy has good reason to be upset. There's huge potholes out in that U. Cole School. And I did speak to Nikki Piper from the school committee and she did uh, call the superintendent and they did say they're going, it's in. It's in the process of being repaired, but I think it's something that needs immediate attention, so I'm asking to. The Warren, uh, the town manager to send a letter to the superintendent, CC the school committee to get, to do immediate action. Those potholes are horrendous and some of them are huge, so I believe they've been there for many, many years and no one's addressed it.
Are any other uh, points or discussion on Mr. Rego's?
I'll just ask, and perhaps this is best answered by the manager, but if I'm not mistaken, they wait until the end of the school year to. Help fix those issues, including potholes and such. Is that your understanding?
I, I've had no experience with that, like, I, but it would make sense uh, seeing that. School is out next month, I mean, next week, but um. I'm sure a letter will certainly help, can't hurt. I suppose so.
I mean, you were down there yesterday, you saw him. It's pretty, it's horrible.
Uh, I agree with Mr. Rego and I do think that the school committee is going to be. Uh, redoing the parking lots, but I don't think there's any reason why they couldn't fill up these with rocks or. Or tar or whatever they want to do. Um, so. Mr. Rego made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Send off that letter and. Maybe they can get it done before the lots are used for the filming next week. Uh, next, we have a request for the town manager to contact Rhode Island Department of Transportation. To arrange for the trimming of the tree on the north side of Market Street where the new bike path signs have been placed. It's also an issue by Mr. Rego.
Yeah, so if you travel down uh, Market Street, they must have spent a couple hundred thousand dollars on these signs. And there are trees blocking the signs, which makes no sense to me. Uh, you would think that they do the, they would do the project, they look back at what they've done and say, oh, maybe I should trim the tree, so I guess it's going to take. Communication from us uh, to the state to uh, trim the trees and actually, right, right on Main Street, the same issue. Where you've got these signs and the trees are hanging in front of them, so.
Okay, Mr. Rego, that's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, moving right along. New business four, discussion and action regarding combining the zoning and planning boards. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty-six. And uh, Mr. De Sisto is up and no better person to speak on this matter because we in the town. Have been looking for a planner for quite some time and prior to uh, knowing about this legislation. Ms. Cronin actually brought this idea forward and low and behold, the legislation was uh, taking place in the House. And Mr. Rego, I mean, uh, Mr. De Sisto was following the issue and now he can. And Mr. Ragel, I mean, uh, Mr. DeSisto was following the issue and now he can report on it. And, uh, I think it's a new opportunity for the town, uh, it's definitely gonna be um, an interesting beginning point, Mr. Ragel, um, again, so used to you speaking, uh, Mr. DeSisto.
Uh, the, um, uh, statute, uh, you're referring to is section forty-five dash twenty-four dash fifty-six point one, and what it does is allows a town to combine, to combine the planning and the zoning boards. And, um, Councilman Trombley can correct me on this, but I really feel that uh, this particular statute, uh, springs from the experience uh, that, uh, towns have, uh, gone through, including Warren with development, um, the Unified Development Plan Review. That allows, uh, for some applications, uh, that go before the planning board for development plan review to also um, make decisions on, on zoning matters. And I think that the experience of some communities has been positive with that, that's why this, this law was passed. Uh, and it's something to consider, uh, here, uh, I just wanted to reference, uh, the town charter. Because, um, section seventeen point zero one B of the charter, uh, you know, the planning board is specifically mentioned in your charter. And, uh, it grants the planning board such duties and responsibilities provided in state law and such additional duties as prescribed by the town council. In section seventeen point zero two, uh, uh, the zoning board, they mention, the, um, charter mentions the appointments and states that it should be in accordance with the general laws of the state of Rhode Island and duties is outlined therein. Uh, you know, that means that this is something that I think you can explore, although I do recommend that there be a charter change on that to reflect this. Uh, that's the first thing on it, this is a policy consideration on your point. The question is, is whether or not you wanna streamline, um, land use, uh, applications here, cause oftentimes what happens is you know, an application needs a planning board approval as well as zoning approval. Currently, the way things are structured is you get your master plan at the planning board level. Then what you do is you get your zoning relief and assuming you get that, you go back to the, uh, planning board for, uh, preliminary plan review and then final plan review. Uh, what this would do would be a, a kind of a one-stop shopping uh, for the applicant and you'd have one board that would be making decisions on, on, um, uh, both areas. The difficulty is, uh, the, the, um, contrary to what you'll hear on it and it's something you need to debate is they say, well, zoning is those are discrete issues as opposed to planning uh, on it and, um, you need to get people with expertise in both, uh, to me and the board. Uh, if you have any questions on that, we'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions of the solicitor at this point?
So, so the planning board is more specific. The zoning board allows variances, but I'm sure there have been times when people have sat on a planning board and says, this is ridiculous that with an I in it, because it's so obvious that this should be allowed. That makes sense what I just said?
Well, uh, the, the way that I look at it is, is, you know, planning, um, it's appropriately named because a subdivision comes in, so now you're took taking a look at a larger area of land and how that's gonna fit in not only for that development, but how it fits in with the rest of the community. The zoning board is more based on one lot and, uh, whether or not the structures on that lot uh, would conform to the surrounding area in terms of setbacks and things of that nature, or whether or not the use is appropriate for that lot, I think that's the main, um, distinction between the two.
Any additional questions?
Well, what, here's the way that I look at this, this is not, uh, and, and as usual, you guys are cutting edge. Um, this is something that, uh, if you're, if you think is worth pursuing, then there would be a referral, uh, uh, to the, um, well, to the town manager, fortunately, I can't send it to the traffic commission. But it's something I would work on with the manager and, uh, your building official on this and, and of course, the boards. Uh, to see if we can come up with a plan that is acceptable to you all and outline what, uh, council action would be needed on this to effectuate it. Uh, but I think the feeling was if, if that's not something that the council wants to go forward on, uh, then, uh, not to, um, uh, spend a lot of time on.
Seriously, this is, so this board would be made up of, uh, five voting members and two alternates that would have to attend every meeting?
That's correct, yes.
With all inquiry rights?
That's correct, what happens is, is, uh, under the statute, uh, you have your alternates and they can participate, but if all of the members are there, uh, then, uh, the alternates don't have voting rights.
But the alternates would need to attend all meetings to be able to vote on a, uh, a permit or an application or an issue, an alternate can't step into, uh, members', uh, seat if there is a vote to be taken and they haven't attended the meetings, so it would be an expectation that all members, alternate as well as full members.
That, that's something that needs to be fleshed out because like, currently under Rhode Island law today, if a zoning board member was not present at the meeting, then they can't vote subsequently, that's the Codier case, specific to a zoning board. Planning is different. Under the Raiden case, if a planning board member i- is, misses a meeting but has had a chance to review transcripts in minutes in the record and can state on the record that they feel comfortable in voting, then they can vote.
So how would that situation be, uh, rectified? I mean, how are those two gonna play out if we were to create this board that oversight on both issues?
It's gonna be some case involving the town of Warren.
Excellent, Mr. Ragel.
I got two questions, one of them, right now, our planning board is made up of seven and two alternates, correct?
Correct, yes.
So this would do, reduce it to two.
Five.
A five and two, yeah.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So, I kinda like the idea where I can see where you could get caught up in some issues. Would it be wise that we have a meeting with the planning board and zoning just to hear their thoughts, I mean?
Sure, so what, what this is, uh, this agenda item is simply seeing if we have the interest to further investigate this and start creating new discussions with boards and the town, this would be a public hearing after this, Mr. DeSisto?
This is what I'm gonna suggest, if it's something you think that should be pursued, next step would be to have a plan presented to you so you can take a look at it. And if that's acceptable, then you can have your workshop, uh, with the boards and say, this is what we're intending to do. And then assuming that, and, and this is a, you know, it's a fairly involved process, but assuming everything goes forward on that, then your next step would be to propose, um, the necessary changes to the ordinance, perhaps even the charter. And, uh, then you'd have a public hearing at that point.
Okay.
I'll just add, there's no or official language or definitive plan being voted on tonight, this is a concept we're interested in exploring as a council in principle, we, uh, I've, I've been on the council about six months now or six meetings that you ever take. And almost every single meeting, there's been an opening on one board, one of these boards or another, and there's been an applicant to fill it and it just it takes up time, it takes, and finding the right people is, is difficult, the, the purpose of this statute was that the state recognized that for small municipalities like ours, it's difficult to find the right qualified people to sit on a board and to deal with the complicated issues of zoning and planning, so it makes sense because they're both land use to potentially combine them, so I think exploring this makes absolute sense for Warren. And it creates a no wrong door approach, so no one gets turned away because they went to the wrong board first or they go to the zoning board and they say, oh, nope, you have to go to the planning board first, and that just creates administrative gridlock and this helps streamline everything and makes, makes government work, and that's what I believe in, so.
All right, so what's the, what's the feeling of the council, is there a motion to approve? And move this idea forward?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There a second?
So, we, we, we're not really approving anything other than the next step, right?
We're approving the process.
The process, okay, yeah.
The creation of a plan.
Outline, okay, yeah.
The timelines for these, the structure, the format.
I'll second.
You're gonna refer it and we'll, we'll do it from there and somehow we're gonna traffic.
Mr. Bolster has a question. Can you please come forward?
So I just prepared a letter just to kind of look at this issue in a sort of macro way. And I didn't know if you wanted to hear that at this moment.
Probably not.
Okay.
I think it would probably be, um, send it to us and, uh, we'll have it on the record for upcoming or participate in the next meeting. Night, as you see, is just the, moving the concept along.
Yeah.
I mean, it's up to you, do you, do you feel what you have written is pertinent to tonight or?
I think Warren actually has a lot of experience with this. Believe it or not, maybe not specifically with the structure of the board, but just the idea that, uh, we have had situations where the planning board and zoning board have had to act as one or where we've had no zoning review.
Why don't you read your letter into, into the record, please?
It'll be about three minutes.
It'll be the easiest way.
Thank you. Um.
And you're what, fifty-one State Street?
Dave, Davidson Bolster, fifty-three State Street.
Fifty-three. I think I almost knew your address by now.
That's okay, um. Combining the planning board and zoning board seems like a novel idea in order to speed up development. But Warren has a lot of experience with this and none of it has been good for its residents, taxes or quality of life. The state thinks it's a good idea, but like many examples of one size fits all legislation, it doesn't work for every town. Some small towns may not be able to get a quorum, but these towns may not have a lot of development pressure, so it may work for them. Warren is not one of those towns. Surrounded by three scenic rivers, many farms and a nationally recognized historic district, Warren is a very desirable place and is under extreme development pressure. Warren's planning board and zoning boards already have full agendas at most meetings. Would this mean that they would have to meet twice a month? Warren has had many examples of developments which were done or proposed with little or no zoning review, including the nightmare of Medicom Avenue, the spot zoning of North Market Street, the out of place Norbert Street and the proposed Settlers Green. All of these projects could have been done different, but bad planning and zoning board decisions can and do permanently alter the natural and built environment that we all have to live with. Medicom Ave, where developers did most of the planning, has the highest and worst accident rates in Bristol County and causes every Warren resident to pay higher auto insurance rates. With dozens of curb cuts and high-speed zones, it is a nightmare for drivers and pedestrians and an assault on all of our senses. We're all very well aware of the inappropriate and over-dance development on Norbert Street which had no zoning review. Lawsuits over drainage and parking, plus parked cars potentially blocking emergency vehicles will eventually cost the town. Combining the planning and zoning board reviews as mandated for the proposed massive Settlers Green development in the rural part of Warren's Greenbelt. The lack of qualifications or training for planning board members combined with the increased burden of all zoning board issues led the board led to the board not following proper procedure during the review process. This led the Rhode Island Superior Court to grant approval of the basic scale and scope of the hundred and twenty unit project. If this development is built, it will cost Warren taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in perpetuity for a host of services, as well as incalculable losses to the pristine upper Kikamewett River ecosystem. These decisions have major impacts and consequences for our town that we all have to live with forever. The only development projects that even require both planning and zoning board review are the large or complicated ones. The very projects that need that extra level of scrutiny. Combining these two boards is unnecessary for Warren and fraught with more nightmare scenarios. If the town wants to do anything to expedite the development review process without sacrificing Warren's financial, natural or quality of life resources, it should require board members to be qualified and trained in planning and zoning law and practices. Having done this for myself over the years, it has been an invaluable experience in knowing how to watch out for the town's interests.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you can give a copy to the clerk or Mr. DeSisto?
If I take him, I'll, I'll forward one to the clerk, but I'd like a copy myself.
Thank you, uh, another, I think we have a little more input here. Uh, from the podium, please, a name and address?
So my name is Joan Coltrane and I live at One Stone Gate in Warren, and I just have a very brief comment. And I'm wondering if it's wise for a single board of five to seven members to assume responsibility for both planning and zoning. Are we willing to concentrate the authority to make these decisions into the hands of a very small number of individuals, however well-meaning, however competent and however well-trained? Do we reduce by half the opportunity for public comment? A combined board is, from my perspective, a reductionist approach which by definition overlooks complexity and, and streamlines the process for the sake of efficiency. And I have many concerns about these issues, thank you.
You're welcome. So, we've heard a few comments from the public, we haven't created a plan and we really don't, uh, understand the scale or scope. Um, but those are great points, I'm sure you'll be at the future meetings if the council votes on this issue, so motions are made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
There it is, so we're gonna, uh, have an investigative, uh, approach, we're going to look at all the information and we will, uh, keep everybody, um, aware of what we're doing, obviously. And next, we're going to try to do something else. Uh, we've been advertising for a planner for quite some time and the planner position in Warren pulls a lot of extra aspects that we have uh, stipends attached to, so it's not just a planner and, uh, Mr. DeSisto as well as, uh, myself and Ms. Cronin, uh, as well as, uh, our Matt Cabral, our, uh, building official have come up with a potential, uh, plan that we'd like everybody to work on. And, uh, it's a discussion action regarding the structuring of a community development and planning department. So what we would be looking at is having, uh, the building, uh, official work with the planning, uh, department under one roof. And Mr. DeSisto, maybe you can expand on that?
Well, this is, uh, where it gets interesting, uh, the, um, when the town charter, uh, Article ten creates a director of planning and community development with certain qualifications. Uh, there's no limiting languages, uh, language in that article that says that the director of planning can't assume other duties. And in fact, that was in discussion, uh, with the prior planner that you had, not her, but the one before that. Uh, but Article thirteen of the charter states that there is a building zoning officer who shall be the head of the Department of Building and Zoning. Again, no language preventing the building official from also serving as the planner. Uh, I, I would, uh, this is another one where I, I think uh, such a plan, uh, if it were adopted, you could have, uh, combination of the building official uh, to create a, the department for that would take a charter change. However, uh, based on the language of the current charter, that could be done by ordinance until such time as, as the charter has changed. Do we have any questions on the matter?
Yes, we do.
The charter change would not be, create a position would be to eliminate the position. Cause the charter says you, you, you shall have a town planner, correct? I mean, um, yeah, town planner.
In this instance, the, the, because of the language that currently in the charter, you need a planner and you need a building official. But it doesn't stop you from saying that we're gonna have one person be the building official and the town planner.
Right.
But if you wanna have a, uh, community development department or a land use department, however you wanna call it, that would take a charter change.
So what we'd, what we would be looking at is hiring additional staff. So we'd have a grant writer, uh, and these are all potentials, so with our putting our heads together and trying to come up with a, a plan here to create this department, uh, we've already come up with a few of the low-hanging fruit where we would have a grant writer, we'd have a, an additional, uh, administrative assistant and, uh, whatever else could come, come out of this. So what we're not trying to do is limit its potential, we're trying to expand with some of what we have as well as hopefully, uh, additional, uh, people. Any other questions? Please?
I'll just ask, um, if, uh, you're, you're satisfied with all the legal implications of this, that this is above board and everything?
Yes, I, you know, I, I recommend not so much from a legal standpoint, but from a governmental standpoint that there be chart, uh, changes affected to the charter. Uh, but in the meantime, I think you could definitely do this and you could, uh, create uh, the, um, structure that you need by way of an ordinance.
Thank you.
But that's on a governmental basis, legally, can you do it? Yes.
Scotty?
Um, I guess I would just like to say in support of moving in this direction or, um, looking to see how this would all work. I mean, we're in, with every passing month, without having a planner, a qualified planner, with having spent countless, you know, spend a lot of time and effort in trying to find one and finding, um, that we're losing uh, department heads to other communities who are paying more, we've gotta be creative here. Uh department heads to other communities who are paying more. We've got to be creative here. We've got to be um think outside the box. So we need to uh do something that's going to allow us to move forward. And address the needs of the community. And um I think there's a lot of potential and opportunity here to to do something. That will get us back on the the right path. And um I'm. I'm eager to see how this will all work out.
This is the same thing. I think you need to see a plan before anything goes. It would be another referral.
Mr. Rego?
That was my question. What's the next step, Tony?
Well, if we, if we approve this.
The panel approving the concept.
We're improving the opportunity to build something.
Okay.
Yeah, if it's if it's something the council's interested in, refer it. We'll come back with a plan so you can take a better look at it and see if it's something that's worthy.
It's gonna be a very similar process to the to the combination of the two boards.
How soon do you think you can ha- bring a plan before the council?
This one's easier than the other one.
This perhaps.
So I I I hope that uh i- it's okay if um they're kind of uncoupled.
Yeah.
Oh, they are two separate items.
Yeah, this one we could, this one, I'm I'm pretty sure we can get something together by July.
We'd be happy.
The other one?
Happy with that.
Uh the better target would be August.
Before the movie comes out.
Before the movie comes out. Get Jake Gyllenhaal in as planner.
Um any additional questions or uh I have no problem allowing the public input at this point, although it's kind of the beginning.
I'm seeing the head shaking like you think it's another terrible idea.
Well, we'll see. I mean, as it is now, we are paying somebody per diem and they are keeping us afloat. But they're not doing any any other uh work that we need done in that office, so. We've had the advertisement out. It's not like we're uh denying um competent competent uh planners.
They're simply.
Nobody's responding.
Yeah, they simply aren't.
It's unfortunate. So uh is there a?
Motion?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeSisto. Um you know what? While you're up there, why don't we just keep you there for a minute? And go back to uh old business one?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I mean ordinance one. We uh, Mr. Farrar didn't have um. Well, I won't even say that. At the time you weren't here and we felt like we wanted you to uh discuss these. With Mr. Farrar, if needed, the two of you. So what were the questions that we had?
Long time ago.
Long time ago, remember?
If it's somebody connecting and they're opening up under this ordinance, yeah, you have to pay the whole street.
I think the question was for minimum alterations uh to. The the street that the, does it need to be, can we leave it at the discretion of the public works director? Is that implied? Or do we have to spell that out by additional language?
You have to spell it out.
Okay, so the one thing that was brought to my attention is someone's doing a, and this is a great example. So a homeowner is doing uh sewer work. And the lateral is very close to the sidewalk. So what they'd be cutting out is almost next to nothing. Let's say not anywhere near fifty feet on each side of the cut that they're required. Can we put the language in there so that the the DPW director could go and take a look at the site?
Yes.
Because this one example, the street budget would kill them.
Exactly.
And it's good tar all the way around.
That language has to be put in.
Okay. So where would you recommend it? On age nine, there are some uh red lines in here. Do you have it in front of you?
I I do, but before I do that, I.
Mr. Wheeler's not here.
Well, I I'd ask that that I I I wanna consult with with Brian.
Okay.
Before we we come up with this language.
So should we just put it off the next month?
I I'd recommend that you continue it based on on what you're asking.
So Rego has a question?
One thing, because this could put a lot of pressure on on the highway director, if he does for one, and then somebody else. Is there a way that somebody could appeal his addition decision to the town council? So if he has the discretion.
But then it becomes political. I mean, it's his job.
I understand I'm going with this.
I kinda do, but I think.
You understand, Tony?
I wouldn't, wouldn't, I I understand what you're saying, but I wouldn't recommend that that could be an appeal. However, language can be, but I'm not joking, by the way, because I always kid around about it, but. You know, if there's an issue, then that's something that you'd wanna have the traffic commission take a look at.
The traffic commission would would oversee how something got paid of payments?
If if someone has a dispute as to what the DPW director says and you wanna review, I think staff review is appropriate.
But that'll come out next month. That's good input.
Yeah.
But the most important thing that I'm trying to address, and I think it's the obvious, is imagine this floor. All the way down to Arthur over there, everything's fine. So if they're cutting one hole over here.
Yes.
You know, I see no reason why they need to 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 cut up a whole nother section of good road.
Yes, by by the way, I I think in speaking with Brian, he's probably gonna say, I don't need need an appeal. It should begin and end with the DPW director. That's what I suspect, but I would like to speak with him before any amendatory language is uh is.
Okay, so no further discussion. Is there a motion to table this till next month? Is that appropriate?
Oh, yeah. So long as I do Brian, is Brian gonna be available? I know he's on maneuvers.
He'll be back to the uh next week.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Trowley's motion stands. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Uh thank you.
You can go back to your perch.
And then we have um.
Next, we have uh.
Ms. O'Connell.
Correct, right? I mean, yeah, and he's six, regular on it. Yeah, um actually, we have a new business six.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See, that's all right. Uh so we have a discussion and action regarding the beautification of Warren. Uh this is approval of permanent placement of large blue pots and the planting of small spruce trees with decorative battery-operated lights. Uh you're here, could you please come on down? Thank you.
Hey, everyone.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell.
Thank you so much.
Um to tonight, I wanted to talk with you about um the group that started. Back in, actually in two thousand seventeen, it was a collaboration between um Maiden Warren. Uh the Artist Cooperative on Main Street and Discover Warren to beautify the streets of Warren. And at that time, I was the director of Maiden Warren. Um and I've since left Maiden Warren. I'm doing other things on my own. But Maiden Warren didn't wanna continue the project, so I I took it on and continued it. But this is a timeline for you. Uh the blue pots started with the blue pots on the street. For to make the streets more uh beautiful. And um it continued with a perennial garden, if you look across. Um at Massasoit Park, which uh is pretty much complete now. We're not gonna expand it anymore. The two projects on the bottom were both uh similar in a way because. Um the volunteer gardeners uh helped to create a grant to finance. The garden at the post office, which is a uh pollinator garden. Which uh supports the the pollinators, which we we all desperately need. Pollinators, bees and butterflies to be able to grow whatever we wanna grow. So that was completed a couple of years ago, and the most recent project that we've done is. The Pollinator Garden at Massasoit Spring. And that has been a really exciting project because it's been a collaboration between Historic Warren. The uh Maxwell House Massasoit Society, which uh actually owns that property. That the spring originally was on. Um the Poconocat um Satcham. And the um expert from the Poconocat tribe about the herbal. Uh and um plants that were used by the tribe. And the Warren Volunteer Gardeners, as well as some people who live in the surrounding area. Um all of the people are actually involved uh that live around that area. Which is right across from the park. Um and that is almost complete. We just need to put some signs up. We're finishing uh identification signs for the botanical plants that we ordered. So it's it's been very interesting how, just a thought to put some pots on the street to beautify the streets. Has grown. And um I love to see other merchants putting out pots of their own. And I think it's spreading, it's spreading. Um because, you know, that's a point of pride. Uh that people want to have a beautiful surrounding, beautiful town. So I wanted to bring to you two new proposals that we we're considering doing. And the first one is on the next page of your packet. Um we started to talk about with the. The the collaborative group, including the Poconocat Satcham Tracy Dancing Star. About the park that has the big stones with the petroglyph kind of carvings in them. People know it as the the Pirate Ship Park, but the actual name is the Massasoit Memorial Park. Um and a few people that I've spoken to, I think even. Mr. Di Pasquale, we've talked about the idea of putting an evergreen tree in the center of those stones and. Tracy Dancing Star loved that idea. So and I've also spoken to um Allison. Um Newsome across the street, and she gave thumbs up because she was a little concerned that. Uh the Poconocat Tribe wasn't being consulted about that, so uh she's in favor of it. And it's not only a beautification piece because the uh tree itself, on the next page. That we're thinking about is a small tree. It's very graceful. It's beautiful. It's a weeping Engelmann spruce. And it grows, the largest it grows is six feet. And uh it's not, it doesn't say this here, but. Uh four to five feet in diameter. So it's not going to take up the whole space there. But it will create a nice little um hidey hole for hide and seek in the park for the children. Because everything is pretty open except for the pirate ship, and that would just make it a little more earthy. Um so we'd like to do that. Um and I have a cost and. Oh, it's going to save the town labor because uh the DPW installs a, they cut down. A holiday tree, Christmas tree every year, and then it gets recycled. Um this way, it would be a permanent one. And.
Could I stop you there?
Absolutely.
With one issue at a time. Uh I'm was excited about the idea, but I have to admit, this little tree doesn't excite me at all.
Yeah, I kind of.
Um I think if we're gonna do something, it should be a medium-sized tree and. Uh when you look at the diameter of where the stones are. I'm hoping that in its maturity, maybe it would be higher than the stones, obviously, and uh. Kinda use the stones as part of the tree itself. So you have the the stones and the tree. That's my idea. I don't know, this little.
How long does it take to mature? To go from this sort of strapping you have?
Years.
About ten years.
It's only six feet tall. I mean, I've seen these kinda, they they stay this way like forever.
Um well, that's something that could be taken into consideration. We wanted to make sure it didn't overwhelm.
Right.
Because there's about twelve feet between each rock, so there's a twelve-foot diameter.
I know sometimes if you send things to committee, it's death by committee, but I think in this case, since we have a tree commission. I think maybe we, you know, it's gonna be a town tree. Uh and we do have um the uh nod. From the tribe, which is always nice, but it's townland, and uh we respect them and we respect the fact that they respect the idea. I think we should send this to the tree commission, get their input, so it's not yours. It's a committee.
That's a great idea.
And uh cuz it shouldn't be what I think, although. I kinda think that, you know, this little tree is just, it's a, I don't think it's.
I did some research and.
Oh, you do?
I like a Charlie Brown tree.
Where kids are. I mean, I I can see this not not being um well-treated.
That was gonna be my question. How sturdy is is that tree in fact? Because I go by that park every day. And uh that tree, if it only grows to six feet, I would imagine the circumference of the um. The trunk, I I would be afraid it it would just get knocked over or wouldn't it, it would, it might get.
That's a good point.
It feels a little diminutive.
I think these are very soft as well.
Yeah.
If they're the ones I've touched.
And Joe has a concern, cuz he's in charge of raising funds for lights. So I I think that the context is good, but I I do agree when I looked at the tree, you want something a little strong, but something that doesn't get overwhelmed.
Sure.
May I also ask, have you had an opportunity to talk with the Parks and Rec director or the DPW director about the this this initiative?
No.
All right. I I I think it would be in uh wise to in involve them because the Parks and Rec director will handle the. The tree, of course, in a day-to-day capacity, and then DPW director will be the one directing the installation of the lights, so. Definitely good to get their perspective as well, as well as the tree commission. So if this is the appropriate time, I'll make a motion to refer the. The element of this that is about the tree uh in Massasoit.
Picking a tree, uh input on picking a tree.
To the tree commission, if that is.
That's appropriate. Is there a second?
Second.
Good idea. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, blue pots.
Blue pots, um each year, the DPW staff. Um bring the blue pots from where they have been stored on the DPW grounds. Over the winter outdoors. Um so they're, you know, they're not kept indoors there. Um and they're heavy. And, you know, that's a lot of work to bring them, put them where. The merchants have agreed to water the pots. Um and then bring them back in the fall. So uh we wanted to talk with you about leaving them year-round. And um in the fall, planting them with bulbs and I think in the um. In the agenda, it says uh little s- blue spruce trees. Probably won't do that. Probably would just be branches like some of the uh homes already have outside of uh. Of evergreen, winter berry, you know.
Holly.
Branches, you know, holly, yep, just something green. And some sparkly lights to light up the streets. And so it would save the DPW labor, beautify the streets of Warren in the cold weather. And I'm, uh I have already spoken to our representative June Speakman about asking for a legislative. Grant, but if should we not get that, um I'd like to appeal to the citizens of Warren. As we did when we needed to replace the blue pots, they jumped right on board and, you know. Just asking the community to be part of an initiative like that, it's it's wonderful. You know, you end up meeting. So many more people and they feel connected and and a part of what's going on.
Okay, so let me stop you right there. Uh what you're asking us for is the vote. I hope the motion will be simply to leave the blue pots on the sidewalk and in the uh quality hands of. The, what do you call yours? The uh.
Warren Volunteer.
Warren Volunteer Gardeners.
We're not a garden club. I I keep.
No, Warren Volunteer Gardeners.
Yes, it's a group of about fifteen to thirty people.
I got it, but what 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 we're gonna give you is the authority for those pots to be there year-round, under your control.
Did have a quick question.
Sure, please.
Um for Mr. DeSisto, um is there any legal implications to that action? To empowering Warren Volunteer Gardeners to take charge of this and leaving the blue pots all year round? Is there any? Anything that we should do legally to uh make that a thing?
No, it's fairly common throughout the state to allow uh uh private groups to uh have plantings and things of that nature. In fact. That would be covered by the Interloper Trust. I'll follow up with them, but I'm not concerned.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
In a second?
Yeah, I can.
All right, DPW. All right, DPW will not remove them and I'm sure when Mr. Wheeler comes back. If you need any help from DPW in what you're doing and the town manager is here. Of course, we're always interested in helping to beautify our town, especially with a group of volunteers that are already doing it. So there you have it. Both things pretty positive and moving forward.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Next, we have Town Manager.
Thanks, Mr. President. We addressed the number one with the. H two O, so, so I'd like to go to number two, which is. An update on Rhode Island Energy. Rhode Island Energy came in, met with the Police Chief and Fire Chief. Building official and we talked about projects that are gonna take place here in Warren. The, the first project is the transmission project and if you recall, that's the changing of those.
Big steel.
Big steel poles, correct.
Bringing in the steel poles, taking out the wood.
Correct.
On the Alma River.
That project is still in the permitting process, so there, there is no timeline right now as to when that will take place. The second project that they talked about with us is a distribution project of energy. And the first component of that consists of working at the substation at the end of Norbert Street. And during this portion of the project, there will be, there's some concern regarding parking in the area. As, you know, there'll be some large trucks going in and out of the substation. But Rhode Island Energy is going to be working with the police department as far as the parking issues. And addressing those as needed during the, the, the transportation of the trucks in and out. It won't be every day. It'll be. Some days, but they did speak with the police chief as to which route would be the best.
What is it they're exactly doing there on the grounds?
Uh, they are changing a lot of the infrastructure at that substation. I know that they said they would be bringing in a lot of. Large pieces of equipment and, and new, new equipment for that.
Does that have anything to do with the drainage in that area?
Uh, we did talk a little bit about that, but that's not part of the, the project itself right now.
Mr. De Sisto, is it possible that there? Them being there, do you think is it impacting the drainage over there? Cause that whole area is nothing but a problem. And now they're coming in to do more work. Where's the, where do we see the plan, the permit? How does that process work?
I think we have to request.
Cause if they're improving the land itself, I would hope they would improve the drainage. Especially the bottom of Hope Street and Norbit Street. So, uh, I guess that's, do, do you need an act by the council?
No, we don't. That's something we can follow up on the staff level.
Okay, so you hear us. Thank you. Please continue.
Um, so that portion of the project is scheduled to begin sometime this July.
Okay.
At the substation. The second component of the, the distribution project. Is changing of transmission lines and replacing telephone poles or poles. Along Water Street and some of the streets running off of Water Street. Right now, the target date to starting this is April of twenty-six, so. And during the meeting, there were, were concerns and expressions about. All of the projects going on, the fire, the police chief had concerns about. Projects on Main Street, projects on Water Street at the same time. And Rhode Island Energy did say that they would work with the police department in the town to make sure that. Major roads are not under repair or construction at the same time.
And I guess that's all we can do.
Uh, and the third component of this distribution project. Is a, goes along the bike path. They're looking to, apparently right now, there is a line that goes from. The bridge on the bike path, Barrington Line, that goes to the substation, which we just talked about. And Rhode Island Energy is looking to put that underground.
Good, they can repair the drainage.
And we did talk about the drainage at, at that time, yes.
Good.
That was brought up. That they're working with DM and Rhode Island Department of Transportation.
And they're gonna be putting that line under the new bridge, correct?
It is correct, it is going under.
So that's a relatively. Fast starting project that must be coming up.
Uh, they're looking at October of this year. That's what they were saying.
All right.
But the, the, the big part of that is that a portion of the bike path may be closed down. And so they're looking to reroute the bike path.
So Mr. De Sisto, do we, sorry to interrupt. I just wanna keep this drainage going. Can we have a meeting with them before this?
Yes.
And do we need a council action?
Yeah, um, on that one, yes.
All right, could I have a motion to have the manager and Mr. Wheeler? Meet with myself or Ms. Cronin, meet with the Rhode Island Energy to discuss. Exactly what their plan is for the underground segment of that wire and see if we can incorporate some drainage work into that.
We have no discussion and action on that. Is that appropriate that we move?
It's, it's not a true action.
Okay, so then do we need a motion?
Just, just a request.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay.
That's the.
That's for us to meet with them regarding the underground utility line.
Correct, yes.
So that's all. You can move right on. I mean, unless you have anything more with that, that line item, continue.
That, that's the complete update from Rhode Island Energy, yes. Uh, uh, number three is just a reminder that there is an open house tomorrow, an event tomorrow at. Cutler Mills in the Event Center. The Rhode Island Green Infrastructure Center and the Warren Tree Canopy Commission. They've been meeting, we've been meeting for nine months or so and tomorrow is a open house to get input from. The public. So I wanted to just to remind both you and the public that that is taking place.
It's from five to six thirty at the Cutler Mills Event Center.
Correct.
Room sixteen, I mean sixteen Cutler Street, Cutler Mills Event Room, it's around back.
Behind Tom's Market.
Behind Tom's Market.
Yes.
Go right ahead, continue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For. Town Manager. For, that is the update for some requests to the state. I reached out to the State Traffic Commission and if you recall, we had requested that the speed limit. Be reduced on Market Street from Town Line to Kikemewitt. And it was all different, thirty-five, forty-five. So that has passed and that those signs should be coming, being replaced this summer. So that will be taking place this summer. There was a request to move the crosswalk from. The intersection of Miller Street and Market closer towards Market Street. The response that I got was that, that this could not be done right now. There was concern of. A blind turn of vehicles turning from Miller Street. If Miller Street was made a one-way, it could be possible. But the DOT did say that they would be willing to meet with the town and discuss this if this was an option that we would like to explore.
Is that something, I don't think we need a motion. Is that something you could set up for us to speak to the?
Yes, I can try to set that up, yes.
Yeah, and I think instead of just focusing on that one. It's that Child Street, Market Street, whole area, cause that light impacts everything as well as the crosswalks.
And let me just say this, I told you about the pole I was gonna kill, but I pushed the button, I did everything right. And the walk sign was up and I was gonna cross and somebody came around the corner, so.
Illegal right turn.
Tell you, illegal right turn. When people see it, go on and turn right, they turn fast, so they can't see you. So that's my argument, so.
So, a- again, I think we, echoing the fact that we would like to discuss, have you discuss with them. That whole intersection that pertains Market and Miller, Market and Child. One of the biggest problems I notice all the time that we walk, you see people that get the red light at. Main going south, but they're already in the intersection. So they continue on because the light was there and now they have nowhere to go. Now let's say somebody's turning left on Child. It's, it's, it's not right and somehow it's gotta be fixed and. I really don't think it's that big of a, of an issue if you really address those three focus points.
I think I could make a good argument.
Okay, we'll see when that day comes. Uh, so, and next week, Peter Alviti is gonna be here. To, if you wanna say anything to him, is that the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yeah.
Seventeenth, so council members, if you wanna come.
Did we get an invitation or?
I'm giving you one right now. I have one and I may not be able to be there, so.
I will, I will send out that information tomorrow.
I was hoping on a different work schedule, but it seems like I may be busy.
Uh, the next was an update, the request for a crosswalk on Market Street, one in front of the Crossroad Restaurant. And the second was in front of the Market Street Pub. That is going to be going to the State Traffic Commission this July. That request, to have them consider that. The request about the repair and the painting of the, the traffic lights at the intersection of Main Market and Miller. I've been told that's part of maintenance, but the State Traffic Commission will reach out. To see what, if anything, can be done as far as painting. They said it may require a full replacement of the lights, but I don't see that happening, but that was the response that I got.
Okay. I mean, at least they're responding.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Town Manager, five to nine. I'm sorry.
Do you have? Was there any, any discussion by them about the Long Lane, the sort of the four-way intersection there and then the. The, the three-way stop at the intersection of Long Lane and Schoolhouse Road? Is there anything on those?
No, but I will follow up.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
I thought we've had like traffic reports on the top of, at the top of Child at Long Lane that there actually haven't been.
I, I seem to recall when we did the Traffic Commission requests that.
We asked for that.
We did ask like the four-way intersection at Long Lane and.
Let me help this. Since we don't have any information, why don't we ask Mr. Sullivan to do an inquiry? On the Long Lane intersection and see if there's any information you can bring back.
I will.
Thank you.
Town Manager, five to nine, if I could do those all at one time.
Please, go right ahead.
Uh, update on Union Street, Union Street, where the signs are ready to go for one way. Heading north. We've sent letters to the residents on, on that section of Union Street that will be affected by the change. I'll be working with the police department to put out a electronic message board to let people know that it's gonna change and we've, we've. Have a target date of July first to start that.
Company Street took a couple of days, but everybody's heading west.
Yeah, good. And that was my next one was Company Street. I wanted to let you know that the signage has been put up. An update on Bay Road, the no parking signs have been in place to reflect the town ordinance. The Harbor Master has met with the. Wasn't Public Works Director, but it was a supervisor for Public Works last week. They looked at the. Out halls that are down there, make a discussion on, and a plan to how to take those out of there. They'll be taking it, three of them out of there, the fourth one. We wanna have a discussion with the solicitor. Because we believe that's on private property and we wanna make sure that we don't do anything that would get the town in a legal situation.
Running out of time to get the Finance Director in jail, so I wanted to.
So belts and suspenders approach, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Just had a quick question.
Great idea. Go ahead, Mr. Tronley.
Just the other signage in, in Laurel Park that was illegally put up, have, have those been removed to your knowledge?
I'm sorry, what?
I believe that, that, the, this, this issue was arisen by Ms. McGreevy. Who, or Mr. McGreevy, who discussed about some illegal signage that had been put up in, in Laurel Park decades perhaps ago that did not meet. Town. Have those been taken down? Cause I know that you said the ones have been put up, but have the old ones that were illegal been taken down?
On, on that road?
Yes.
Yes, the old ones were taken down and the new ones were put up. Is there, this was on Bay Road, I believe, that those were taken down, yeah.
Okay, do you know about the rest of Laurel Park area? If there was any other issues that were taken care of?
I, I don't know if those have been addressed. We will look, I'll look into that. I know there was a, a one-way. Sign, I think there was an issue with the one-way sign. We've looked at that with the Fire Chief. And he believes that that probably should say that way.
Well, I think I have some good input here. Mr. Tronley, if you know of any additional instances that we should send on. We hear now that there's no information on them, but we can follow up.
Yes.
So please send the information to Mr. Sullivan and he'll move right along with the departments to see what we can do.
Thank you.
No problem, good for you. Continue.
Update on the lamp posts, I've talked to the Director of Public Works and that is a summertime project to address those. The Town Hall windows, the Fire Chief has met with the representative of Arnold Lumber to get, last week to get a. Idea of what the cost would be to replace those windows. We're staying, waiting for information to get back on that.
This is the facade of what used to be the.
Yes, outside the training.
Rescue station?
Garage door.
Yep.
Yeah, for the fire station, rescue. Okay, next.
And then the front door, today we have not had any discussion on that. I will meet with the Public Works Director to talk about what, if anything, we can do for the, the address of the Town Hall front door.
And number ten.
Number ten is the resignation letter from the current Finance Director, David Burlingame. As you can see, he's given me his letter and that is his last day of working here would be. July eleventh of this year.
Mr. Burlingame, I wanna thank you and I appreciate your service to the town. And it wasn't easy coming in like you did, rough waters and you. You rode them out pretty well and I, I, I truly do hope that you enjoyed your time here, cause it wasn't easy. And I know I was a little hard on you, but I know you appreciated that, cause you, cause you rose the occasion and, and it did. You know, did what we asked. So, thank you. Any other council members wanna?
I'd like to say thank you also.
I would like to also say thank you and wish you well and, and relaxation in your retirement. You're not going to work for somebody else, are you?
Pentagon.
I was five years younger, I've worked five years more, but I, but I'm not, I can't.
Mr. De Sisto.
It really has been, it's been a pleasure and I appreciate your, your support and guidance and. And giving me the opportunity to work with such terrific colleagues.
He wants to put you in jail.
I'll give you, I think we owe him a round of applause. Oh, you may.
Let Dave down and wanted to find him a nice spot in a gated community.
Well, the two of you have had a great relationship and he's still here until July eleventh. And I appreciate the fact that you will be here to assist the new Finance Director and show him the ropes because. You didn't have that privilege. You came into an empty office and a town that was in a mess. And again, thank you. I mean it.
President, may I just say?
Of course you can.
Yeah, I'll just add that the, I know that the office wasn't empty. It was filled to the brim with paperwork and he got through that mountain of mess with. A great distinction and, and tenacity. So thank you very much for your service to the town, Mr. Broom.
Okay, so now, do we, we need to do anything now, right? Just accepting his letter of resignation, yeah, we do, we got it. So now, next, number eleven.
Yes, Mr. President. On the heels of Dave's resignation letter, I'd like to introduce Gary Marshall. Gary Marshall, who uh was uh. Applied and there were several candidates that were um good candidates that we interviewed, uh the interview committee. Um. Looked at uh Gary's uh resume, uh which consists of, you know, twenty-five years of experience, seventeen with the Town of Bristol. Um and he's coming to us with municipal experience, uh we believe um he's gonna be able to jump right in. Uh the committee unanimously uh recommended uh Mr. Marshall. Um and uh I'm gonna take their advice and and recommend that uh Town of Warren uh hire Mr. Marshall as the uh next Finance Director for the Town of Warren.
So it's appropriate at this time to ratify with a motion, Mr. Sullivan's hiring and all in favor or is there a motion to ratify? Thank you, second.
Second.
We're behind you, so all in favor.
Aye.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
I'd like to say a couple of words about you, so this is the first time we've got to meet you, so.
Um so I.
Don't blow it.
Like you said, I I I've been with the Town of Bristol for seventeen years, I was a Deputy Treasurer. Um for fifteen of those years, um so I, I have a lot of municipal experience. Um last two years, I've been at the Police Department as a budget, business manager. Um and so I'm I'm looking forward to uh getting into this and uh and and.
Yeah, you enjoy the challenge.
I do.
You got it.
I do, so.
Well, we're thrilled and uh you currently are familiar with the software that we're gonna be purchasing? Does that come up at all?
You, yeah, I've worked with a couple of different.
I believe you already currently use software that we don't have and you're gonna be purchasing it. And you're going to be um dealing with it and uh we welcome you.
Okay.
And uh that's about it, I think. Don't show up late.
Yep, thank you very much, uh I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Gary.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Next, uh we have number twelve. Discussion in action on a request from the Town Manager to be excused from the August twelfth, twenty twenty-five Town Council Meeting. Is there a motion?
Requesting that, no. Some moves.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I don't even know if you need a motion on that one, but it's official.
Thank you.
If you wanna tell us what you're doing, it's up to you.
I I let you know what I'm doing, uh I'll be traveling to uh London. Uh my wife's cousin is gonna be married, it's a, an Indian wedding, so um uh there are several events throughout the week. That we'll be attending, so um it's just not one of a one-day event, so um that's the reason why I need to uh. Get the excuse, I'll send pictures.
Sounds fun.
Especially of me dancing if you would like.
So hey, I I wanna amend my motion, he has to come back.
Nice. Next.
Thank you.
Finance Director, Dave, come on up. It's all yours.
Time, thanks.
Revenues and expenditures.
I have nothing to add uh beyond what was in my, my report this month, that. So let me get right into the uh the over expenditure, cause we've got a few of them.
Okay.
Um. The Town Planner, the GIS mapping software will be over budget by thirteen hundred and thirty-one dollars. We request eight hundred and eighty from the Town Planner, general office expense and four hundred and fifty from the Assessor General Office expense.
Okay, makes sense. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
The Fire Department will be over budget by about fifty-five hundred dollars for fuel. We request that you authorize transfer of that money from the firefighter details slash storm line.
Okay, and is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Hi.
Nice.
Okay, the. Third one is Police Department Dispatch Holiday Pay will be over budget by, it said you have twenty-one hundred, I think, it's thirty-one hundred.
Okay, so there's a typo.
Change.
Is there thirty-one hundred from the police wages and salaries?
Yes, I believe they have a uh amended.
Yeah, we have an amended.
Probably, yeah.
Number three.
I have the other one. So if it, if it was a typo, is the uh other line item appropriate to fill that thirty-one hundred?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
So just to make sure, how much it's, I have it, it's three zero one zero, is that?
But that's, you're right.
So it's three thousand and ten?
Yeah.
Three thousand and ten.
Three thousand and ten.
Thank you, Mr. Johnley. So is there a motion to cover the three thousand and ten from line item? No, four line item, zero, one, five, four, zero, zero, one, one, zero, five, zero, to cover the um over expenditure?
Uh, to that effect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
Public Works overtime will be, is currently over budget by thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Um wait a minute, it says four thousand, three hundred and eighteen.
We're on.
Uh there's an amendment that I believe.
We're on number four?
Uh no, uh yes, five, four, excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I skipped one. Yep. Um the dispatch wages and salaries will be over budget by forty-three hundred and eighteen dollars.
Mm-hmm.
We will transfer twenty-nine hundred from the Animal Control, the Assistant Animal Control Officers. Um uh compensation line and one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars from the Police Communications. And three hundred dollars from the Police Part-Time Clerk.
All right, glad you found it all. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, number five.
Public Works overtime. Thirteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars they need. Ten thousand of that from the parking lot lease. Twenty-six hundred and fifty from the tree management plan and eight hundred and thirty-three from protective equipment.
All right, is there a motion to cover that?
Just a quick question on that.
Discussion.
Uh Dave, we're over right now on that.
Yes.
So we're gonna need money for June, correct?
Yep.
All right, so.
But we don't know how much.
Right, so.
This covers us for now.
Okay.
Uh I just had one quick question.
Please.
On on my copies of these documents, we have uh the Town Manager approved, we don't have the Department head signature, is that because Mr. Wheeler is not uh in con- in?
Yes, Mr. Wheeler was not here to sign.
Understood, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And we're just telling you that the wastewater plant operations is over, underfunded this.
Dave, we need um, I need a motion to cover the thirteen forty-three from those three other accounts.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go.
Okay, wastewater operations, underfunded this month by thirty-one thousand, sixty-five dollars. This is, we're gonna cover this by going into our reserves and then paying it back with the um increased.
Yeah, next year.
Next year.
This is, so do we have thirty-one thousand dollars in the general fund?
Oh, sure.
So hold on a second, so last month, we we approved an additional hundred thousand for this line item, right?
Yeah.
So even with that hundred, it wasn't enough, we needed another thirty-one.
Yeah, and we're gonna need more, this is all utilities. So we're paying for things we've already consumed.
No, I think this could cover it.
I'm sorry?
With additional thirty-one, you should cover everything. Cause we gave you a hundred thousand.
Well, that's for this, that's this month right now, we're encumbered right now for thirty-one thousand. Um and next month, there will be um requests for additional.
Yeah, but last month, didn't we give you a hundred thousand last month to cover that?
That that would cover the uh encumbered um money that we did not have last month, yes, yeah, and.
All of these utilities, unfortunately, the bill comes after the usage. Uh and we made the corrections on the sewer usage fee. So um it's the unfortunate bullet we gotta bite. Uh so wastewater, thirty-one thousand, sixty-five dollars to come out of the general fund, is there a motion?
I just have one more question.
Please.
I'll make the motion, but I do have a quick question. It is um, so for next fiscal year, because we. Put that into the budget in the increase in the sewer fees, we have some. Wiggle room there, there's some sort of offsetting cost versus profit from that, is.
There's no profit.
Not profit, I I know I'm using the wrong terminology, but reserve essentially to replace. Is, how much does this cut into, can, for for next meeting?
It doesn't. In, are you talking about the fit, next fiscal year?
Yes.
So when the first quarter of taxes comes out, the amount from the increase in the wastewater treatment per uh wastewater treatment. Uh what do we call it? I'm blank.
Fee.
Fee. Um that will then be there in that first quarter.
So just to, just to clarify my question, so we taxed to pay for the expenses of each fiscal year, but we are increasing the taxes. In the next fiscal year, to cover.
The sewer usage fee isn't a tax, it's outside of the four percent that we're required to work under. So it's not a tax, it's a fee. Some would argue it is.
It's a tax.
Correct, but a tax is set by the budget, the sewer usage fee is set by us covering the costs at the plant.
Understood. Terminology aside, what I'm, what I'm trying to get is the, we. Put into the fee, an increase to cover the net. Lo- not uh the net cost that we were covering from our reserve account in, through our reserves for this fiscal year. And this is on top of what we already have, e- essentially the hole that we're already in.
I got what you're saying, so so because we increased the sewer usage fee by twofold. I believe, we will be reimbursing the the coffer, this, that we've used this year, next year, yes.
Right, and the, what I'd like to know for next meeting is if David could uh provide um or um our new. Lesson, the new gentleman could provide just essentially between the thirty-one, sixty-five in this month and then whatever comes out of next month. How much that cuts into what we had allocated or we had calculated, that's all I wanna know.
It it's not, we, what we're, what we're spending now is out of our general fund.
Right, but we are getting money put back into the general.
Next year.
Next fiscal year, but this is cutting into it additional amounts, if I'm not mistaken.
This is coming out of the general fund now.
No, I I I understand what Mr. Trump is saying.
Explain it to me.
You're covering the deficit. He wants to know what the additional deficit is gonna be before the next fiscal year. And whether or not the increase is going to be able to cover the total deficit.
Yes.
But this fiscal year, correct?
That is exactly, thank you for putting it in better terms.
But wait a minute, we're, i- it's not feasible. Next month's utility bills are gonna come in. So we doubled the amount that we were over, so next year, yes, we're going to have more money than our utilities. I'm not sure what, what.
Can I ask? I think what he's saying is, is it, is it gonna be a structural deficit? Or is the increase gonna eliminate the deficit in the current fiscal year? So that going forward, you don't have a structural deficit in this particular line item, correct?
I, yes, that is, that is.
Yeah, so next year, we won't have a deficit.
So I guess you're, you're asking, did we plug in enough to cover it for next year? I think that's your question.
That's the correct.
And I, and I think we did, I think we did.
But it has nothing.
But I do, I would like to see the dollar and cents, if David could just provide that at the next council meeting, that's doable. Thank you.
We can do that.
You mean what we're gonna be over next, under next month?
Yeah, you're not gonna be here.
Between, yes, between this month and next month.
Yeah, he's gonna be, he's gonna be asking us for it, absolutely. Yeah, you'll see it, we're not gonna have the money.
You want the total.
There's one more.
Yes, I want the total amount because we did, when we calculated with the sewer usage fee, had to increase. We had a pre-programmed idea of how much we were spending out of the general fund and how much we were reimbursing our general fund. But I believe this is beyond what we had calculated, so I just wanna see how much that cuts into it. Cause I do believe we gave ourselves a little bit of a cushion in case this exact thing happened. I just wanna see dollars and cents where we're at, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Okay.
And you made a motion, and I second it.
And we had discussion.
And we had discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnley.
We have one more. The Town Hall is over budget by fifty-two hundred and six dollars. We would like to.
That was on a separate.
Five thousand two hundred.
That was uh what you sent us.
Yes, that's right, I emailed that, yeah.
Okay.
Transfer that money from the Mary Lee Park School to cover this.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, well done. And uh again, thank you. It's not easy. I make it look easy, but it's not. Next, we have. A G, Recreation Director, where are you? You awake?
I am.
Okay. You have a request for a renewal for the use of Warren Town Beach on Sunday mornings. Seven AM to nine AM and Wednesday evenings, five to seven PM through Labor Day for free yoga instructions. From Jeffrey J. Brown, thirty-one Meadowbrook Drive, Barrington, R.I. What else can you add to that?
It went well last year, we're gonna do it again this year.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
All in favor? Okay, keeping you on your toes.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request for a use of Warren Town Beach for free beach yoga from Anne Samiri. Uh ninety-one Main Street and uh.
I'll make a motion.
Well, I mean.
Oh, sorry.
Any uh, have you worked with her?
I have not, but she recently moved to town and she wanted to do uh some yoga lessons and as long as they don't con- they will not con- conflict with um. Mr. Brown and.
You're gonna give it a shot.
We're gonna give it a shot.
Okay.
Different choices.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great.
Yes.
Next.
We, we need both.
Oh yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Town Clerk, discussion in action and authorization for the Town Council President to sign the three-year contract with Curious Systems Inc. For the judicial case management software. Anything you wanna add to that?
I have a question.
Mr. Rego?
Just, I believe that if you remember um during the budget.
Yeah.
Town Council Manager, he did explain that they were going up from five dollars to six dollars, the whole software was getting up to a new. Um, yes, we got a contract with them, but next three years.
My question is this, when I read it, we pay X amount of dollars for, I think, I think seven thousand for five thousand tickets, is it? But if you use more tickets, you pay less. So you, they credit you afterwards for for using more tickets, it's very confusing.
It's, this, this is, this is what they've always done.
Yeah? So if you use more, they credit you?
Yes.
That's the screwiest way of.
It is, but that's what they do, however, there's one flaw in this contract.
Hmm.
And I'm gonna ask for an amendment. The notice provision is to Town of Warren, five fourteen Main Street, Warren, Rhode Island.
That's correct.
Well, here's the thing, that that, that's a res- that's a notice, that's a recipe for something to happen, the letter comes in, who knows where it goes. So I'd ask that the, it be amended to say Town Clerk, Warren Town Hall, five fourteen Main Street, Warren, Rhode Island. This way, it's going to somebody, so we don't have any notice issues. Other than that, it's a great contract.
I I just curious, how many tickets we usually do a year? Is there over a thousand?
We're up to right now.
Actually, since the beginning of the the contract, I could be from September, from last year, I think it was over four thousand, I'm all right.
Wow, if you give another thousand, you get a deal, but not on me.
Yeah, but that's, it just keeps on.
Three and fifty about a month.
Wow, that's, that's, yeah. Yeah, so.
All right.
Every decent price.
All of you wanna stay here longer?
I'll make a motion to amend this contract, to approve the contract with the amendment that we add the clerk's office.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, who wants to stay longer?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for making it to the end. Thank you, man.